Five minutes until airtime?
Yeah, I asked Jack to keep me posted, yeah. And, and I, I, I just wanted to say that we're going to be out.
L U. She's going that office walk, sorry to walk, right?
L U. And Director Edwards, Action News get ahold of me. Action News, Dr. Green, can you tell me about the news?
What?
I can, Director Edwards, we're going to, uh, we're going to start all procedures. Answer it like this.
Five minutes until airtime?
Um, can you text message Daryl and see if he has a flight coming in?
Yeah, if he's in flight, he may not get it, but I'm.
Well, he was, well, he's supposed to have landed. Who was flying him from out of town on business? And he's supposed to have landed and be on his, well, that's why I said, just check with them, because I'm expecting him there by about six thirty.
Oh.
Uh, it will come to me, so I'm not trying to think of it. Yeah, no, that's fine, I'm just, I'm gone Tuesday, Wednesday.
Two minutes, two minutes.
Oh, with the resolution. They changed, um, twenty thirty-five to twenty thirty-four because it's for fifteen years and that they go through twenty thirty-five, so it's.
Oh, that's right.
Oh, that's good, you landed them?
Right.
It's kind of a photo thing. It's gonna be a while before we get to the business.
Okay, uh, so it changed to twenty thirty-five. Okay, yes. Oh, boy. Went down to, oh, ninety-one. Oh, okay, it's just down there. I guess it's time. I call the meeting, uh, this meeting to order. The School Board of the Duval County School District is now convened in its regularly monthly meeting. To everyone present and to our television viewers, I wish to extend a warm welcome to this meeting of the Duval County School Board. The vision statement of the school, of the Duval County School Board states, "Every student is inspired and prepared for success in college or career and life." The mission statement of the Duval County School Board is, "To provide educational excellence in every school and every classroom for every student, every day." The Duval County School Board is here tonight to listen to reports from district staff and to set policy for the district that will improve student achievement. We will also address budgets, contracts, personnel appointments, and other business items that require a vote of the board. The management and day-to-day operations of the district are the responsibility of the superintendent. It is not the role of the board to make a managerial or operational decision. The board has policies and procedures in place to assist the superintendent in resolving management and operational issues. If items appear to move quickly, it is because the board meets in an agenda committee meeting prior to the board meeting for an in-depth review of all agenda items. The committee meeting for the June four, twenty nineteen, School Board Meeting will be held on May twenty-one, twenty nineteen, at nine o'clock, and the public is invited to attend. As a show of courtesy and respect to each other, we ask that all mobile phones be turned off and that no flash photography be used during the meeting. For those wishing to address the board during our public comment portion of the board meeting, please note that we will accept speaker cards until six twenty P M. Thank you for taking the time to join us this evening and for your interest in the operation of the Duval County School District. Do we have, do we have a student tonight? Don't we have a student tonight? Come on up.
May I proceed with the invocation, ma'am?
Yes, thank you.
Dear Father, we thank you for this day and the opportunity to not only be here to celebrate the accomplishments of many of our students, but to help further establish our county as a beneficial community for everyone. We also pray for those being recognized for their awards and moving on to college, and we ask for your strength and your guidance with them as they start a new stage of their life. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It is now time for presentations. District five, Palm Avenue Exceptional Student Center, Principal Michael Turner. Michelle, Michelle, I'm sorry.
Michelle Johnson.
What says Michael Turner? Did I get you, I'm sorry. Michelle Johnson?
Dolores Johnson.
Dolores Johnson.
From Palm Avenue Exceptional Student Centers, greetings to our Honorable Chairwoman, our Honorable Board Members, and our Superintendent. I am Dolores Johnson, Assistant Principal at Palm Avenue Exceptional Student Center. Due to a death in his family, my Principal, Mr. Michael Alexander, is unable to attend this evening to present Palm Avenue's Transition Program. On behalf of Mr. Alexander and his family, I welcome your prayers and kind thoughts. Thank you. Palm Avenue's Transition Program includes business enterprises, community-based vocational education. Palm Avenue's Business Enterprises includes Helping Hands, which helps students to sort, correlate, and shred paper, and package business items by, from community partners such as Fastenal, the Donna Deegan Foundation, and the PGA Championship. Another business enterprise is Woodcutters &amp; More, which allows students to perform woodshop tasks such as building bookshelves, picture frames, and create musical instruments called cahoons. Another business enterprise that we have is the Palm Cafe. Students develop skills in food preparation and cooking in our Palm Cafe. Our last business enterprise is especially grown, which allows students to develop skills in gardening, horticulture, and groundskeeping. Our community-based vocational education allows students to develop work skills by volunteering at various community-based partner sites. Palm Avenue's CBVE Business Partnerships include Publix Shands Hospital, St. Vincent's Hospital, Goodwill Northeast Florida, St. Catherine's Labor Manor, Chart Wells, and Feeding Northeast Florida. Through the advocating efforts of Palm Avenue's job coaches, students obtain employment this school year through the following business partnerships. We had two students to be hired at Shands Hospital, one student to be hired at Chart Wells, we had three students to be hired by Goodwill of Northeast Florida, and we had one student to be hired at St. Vincent's Hospital. Five students will be hired during the extended school year by Goodwill for their, um, summer job program. Now we're going to look at our Transition Program video. Thank you for allowing me to present Palm Avenue's Transition Program, and we welcome our district and our board members to come out to visit our school. Thank you.
That was an excellent presentation. Wait, wait just a minute, wait. Vice Chair, Vice Chair Jones, um, I know you are very proud of this school. I was, that's an excellent video, and I'm certainly, you want to comment?
Well, thank you, ma'am chair. Um, we tried to get, um, Palm Avenue here last time, but they had open house that time, and so I asked Mr. Alexander, and he explained that he had death in his family, and I were condolences to Mr. Alexander and his family. He had to go all the way to New Orleans. Uh, but they do an exceptional job, they get the job done, as the students say, and, uh, we're doing, I mean, people don't realize what district, district does for students of all backgrounds, exceptional or non-exceptional. And we really appreciate the hard work that you do, making sure those students are ready for the world of work, uh, no matter where they start. We do an exceptional job. I think we do a better job anywhere, anywhere in the state of Florida, but certainly in Northeast Florida. And so we really appreciate what you're doing and what you will continue to do, and I look forward to the graduation next Friday, Friday of next week.
Yes, sir, on the seventeenth.
Seventeenth, and I'll be there. Thank you very much.
Thank you. It is now time for our Mental Health Proclamation.
Essential, life-changing, and critical. These are just a few words we would use to describe our work in bringing increased access and awareness in mental health services for all students. In view of May being Mental Health Awareness Month, we wish to honor those partners and staff who are driving this important work, but first, we turn it over to District Two Board Member Elizabeth Anderson.
Okay, I think we're on. I'm gonna read our twenty nineteen Mental Health Awareness Month proclamation. Whereas mental health is essential to everyone's overall health and well-being, and whereas all Americans experience times of difficulty and stress in their lives, and whereas prevention is an effective way to reduce the burden of mental health conditions, and whereas there is a strong body of research that supports specific tools that all Americans can use to better handle challenges and protect their health and well-being, and whereas mental health conditions are real and prevalent in our nation, and whereas with early and effective treatment, those individuals with mental health conditions can recover and lead full, productive lives. And whereas each business, school, government agency, healthcare provider, organization, and citizen shares the burden of mental health problems and has a responsibility to promote mental awareness and support prevention efforts. Now therefore, be it resolved, on this seventh day of May, two thousand nineteen, that we, the Duval County School Board, do hereby proclaim May twenty nineteen as Mental Health Awareness Month. We also call upon the citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, and schools in Duval County to recommit our community to increasing awareness and understanding of mental health, the steps our citizens can take to protect their mental health, and the needs for appropriate and accessible services for all people with a mental health condition.
And so we begin by recognizing district staff who have worked to increase mental health awareness and have led over three thousand school and district employees in youth mental health first aid training. They are Executive Director of Student Discipline and Support Services Jackie Simmons, Director of School Behavior Health Katrina Taylor, Mental Health Support Specialists Michelle Johnson and Morgan Seiler, Supervisor of School Social Work Laura Chiarello, and Crisis Psychologist Heather Lawson. We also want to thank those key partners who have helped increase our students' access to behavior health services through a Full Service Schools Collaborative. Thanks to their contributions, we now have over one hundred therapists providing counseling services in one hundred sixty schools. They are United Way of Northeast Florida, represented by President and CEO Michelle Braun, and Full Service Schools Director Kito Porter, Kids Hope Alliance with Mary Nash, Special Needs Director, Chartran Family Foundation, Baptist Health with Dr. Terry Andrews, Behavior Health Services Director, the Community Foundation, the Jacksonville Public Education Fund with Rachel Tutwiler-Forten, Executive Director, Child Guidance Center with Theresa Ruline, President and CEO, and Karen Ivy, F S S Director, Children's Home Society with Tracy McDade, Regional Executive Director, Alex Field and Kim Moore, Jewish, Jewish Family Community Services with Ed Spade, F S S Director, and Yugeetha Singh, Clinical Director, Family Foundations with William Haley, President and CEO, and Penny Nenviz, F S S Director, and finally, Daniel Memorial, with Gregory Pittman, School-Based Programs Director. Please join us in recognizing our partners and staff for this important work. We consider this next group to be the Business Leaders of Tomorrow. Tonight, their ten Team Duval seniors being recognized for earning a one thousand dollar A B M Education Services Scholarship. A B M has served as the district's custodial service provider since July two thousand seven. Their annual scholarship program rewards students pursuing a degree in business or a business-related field. To earn this scholarship, students have to demonstrate their leadership ability, meet specific academic requirements, provide letters of recommendation, and write an essay. This year's group of winners comes from all over Team Duval, representing eight different high schools, and we believe they all have very bright futures. Here from A B M to present these students with their scholarship checks are District Manager and Regional Director of Operations Jason Whitaker and Operations Manager Steve Christ. This year's winners are Bryce Williams, Lauren Feature, Charles Cook, Trinity Brinkley, Evan Rayford, David Solomon, Chloe Pravat, Mia Yuzel, John Dion, and Talaja Brooks. Please help us congratulate the recipients of the twenty nineteen A B M Education. For our next presentation, we'll have a PowerPoint up, so we will direct your attention to the monitors briefly. From our Florida farms and straight to our schools, Duval County Public Schools Nutrition Program and Chart Wells K twelve have been committed to working closely with farmers to buy and serve local fruits and vegetables to students throughout the school year. Over sixty percent of the produce served on this year's menus was grown in Florida, as you can see on the map. Tonight, we're recognizing our farming partners for their work in providing fresh, locally grown produce to our students. We'd also like to thank the Florida Department of Agriculture for their support and guidance. We begin with Grimes Produce, represented today by Josh Griffin. Grimes Produce supplies the district with two million fresh Florida strawberries each spring. Next, we recognize a partner of four years, Cherokee Satsumas, represented by Matt Glass. Thanks to this partnership, our students enjoy freshly picked Satsuma oranges. We now have the Florida Classic Growers, represented this evening by Andrew Bentley. This school year alone, they provided one hundred twenty thousand pounds of Valencia oranges. We now welcome Melon One, with us is Rachel Singo. Melon One provided two hundred fifty thousand pounds of watermelon and ten thousand cantaloupes for our students this school year. Next is R C Hatton Farms, represented tonight by Charlie Hogan. This school year alone, they delivered sixteen thousand pounds of corn directly to our cafeterias. Mac Farms, represented by Myra Arvizu, is next. Our students enjoyed their red potatoes this school year with a special roasted potato hash menu item. We have, um, White Harvest Farms and, uh, City Councilman Jacoby Pittman, I don't think she's here this evening, but she represents them. They not only provide unique herbs and vegetables, they also offer our students behind-the-scenes tours. And finally, we have Native Fresh, represented by Laura Eldridge. They not only educate students on sustainable farming practices, they also provide produce samples for culinary workshops. With us from the Florida Department of Agriculture, Division of Food, Nutrition, and Wellness, are Beth Spratt and Andrew Smith. From D C P S, we have Assistant Superintendent of Operations Dawn Nelson and Director of Food Service Jane Zentco. From Chart Wells K twelve, we have CEO Belinda Oakley, Vice President of Operations Jane Buttermore, Director of Operations Will Ratley, and Nutrition Service Center District Manager Daryl Smith. Please help us honor our farming partners for their hard work and dedication to our students. This partnership isn't just about food, it's also about students' futures. Duval County Public Schools Nutrition Program and Chartwell's K-12 are proud to present $1,500 college scholarships to 40 worthy high school seniors representing 18 schools across the district. These students were hand-selected from a vast pool of applicants based on their essays and scholastic achievements, with plans to attend colleges, universities, technical or trade schools. In addition, five first-year meal plan scholarships were awarded to seniors attending historically-black colleges or universities operated by Chartwell's partner Thompson Hospitality. Again, with us are Dawn Nelson and Jane Zentco, and then with Chartwell's, Belinda Oakley, Jane Buttermore, Will Ratley, and Nutrici-- and pardon me, Daryl Smith. For our first group of students, we have Tanyan Adams, Hannah Atkins, Karikin Barton, Zachary Bell, Robert Bay, Parker Blessing, Jasmine Butler, Ajaya Clark, Gabrielle Corbett, Tadarius Daniels, Michael Esgera, Rachel Estenislo, Alexandria Farrell, Lauren Fisher, Kayana Ford, Eliah Gant, Carlton Gant, Kenell Gibbs, Anaya Green, Joseph Hopkins, Corey Houston, Fantasy Jones, Wahid Khalili, Shakira King, Sierra Long. Congratulations to our first group of winners. There are more names I need to read. Michaela McDougall, Abigail Miller, Nakia Mitchell, Irielle Mobley, Andrew Botley, Adrian Neesmith, Robert Radloff, Liliana Silva, Zakaira Simpson, Sylvan Sloan, Sarah Ayuna Spencer, Nancy Stracken, Ian Thomas, Susanna Washburn, Jasmine Waters, Elias Wiley, Maya Wiley, Jemira Williams, Jasmine Williams, and Joyce Z. Congratulations.
Chairman, it looks like these scholarship awardees have a lot of supportive family and friends in the audience. Can we have them wave?
This next group of students put their knowledge of African-American history to the test and absolutely aced it. We're speaking of the winners of this year's James Lee Coon Jr. African-American History Brain Brawl. The competition was established in 1992 to celebrate African-American history and to promote education and positivity. It's held in question-answer format, and students complete in three divisions: elementary, middle, and high school. This year's contest was held in February at Edward Waters College. The winning teams were presented with individual trophies, a trophy for their school, bookbags, and medals. Tonight, we have several board members of the James L. Coon Jr. Foundation with us: Sharon Coon, Frances Buckner, Judge Pauline Drake, Jeanette Ali, Councilman Samuel Newby, Michael Stewart, and Albert Buckner. This year's winning elementary team is from Garden City Elementary School. They are Harper Timmons, Brooklyn Scott, Isaiah Little, Tori LaRosa, and Shaunice Price, with sponsor Tremaine Jones, Assistant Coach Deborah Bryant, and Principal Michelle Glover. Our middle school team is made up of students from Mandarin, Reebolt, Dupont, and the Young Men's Leadership Academy, and they were sponsored by Holsey Temple. They are Mackenzie Bryant, Murray Monte Glover Jr., Timothy Cremarti, and Jackie Mifadden. Their sponsor is Florence Pollan, and they're also joined with Reverend Dimitri Burke of Holsey Temple. Finally, the winning high school team is from Darnell Cookman School of the Medical Arts. They are Mia Yuzel, Tonya Rich, Arneisha Coleman, Nancy Stracken, and Arrington Grant. With them are sponsors Marcia Peoples, Patricia Reynolds, and Principal Tyrus Lyles. Congratulations to all of you. It's a competition that's taken our final group of students from the classroom to the field and to multiple victories. We now wish to recognize Team Dasher, five Darnell Cookman students who have earned first-place wins at this year's regional and state Envirethon competition, and they're accompanied by members of the Duval Soil and Water Conservation District. The Envirethon is a national problem-solving natural resource education program for high school students. The entire competition takes place outdoors, with students participating in activities in five categories: soil, wildlife, aquatics, forestry, and a speech on current events issues. The Duval Soil and Water Conservation District hosts the regional competition, and it was at this competition that Darnell Cookman teams, led by Dr. Scott Sowell, earned first, second, and third-place finishes. The school's first-place team went on to the state competition in live oak, and they claimed another victory, which was first place in the current issue's oral presentation speech. The team spoke about how to mitigate nutrient pollution from agricultural runoff in the Suwannee River watershed. Several board members with the Duval Soil and Water Conservation District are with us this evening. And then here from Darnell Cookman's Team Dasher are LaMarke Dasher, Kelly Dixon, Taylor Ashburn, Rebecca Rivera Clapp, Stephanie Garcia, and their teacher, Dr. Scott Sowell, and Principal Tyrus Lyles. Congratulations. This concludes this evening's presentations.
Approval of the May 7, 2019 Agenda, that the Duval County School Board approved the May 7, 2019 Agenda as submitted on April 30, 2019, with the following changes. Board Member's Resolution Regarding Levy of Discretionary One-Half-Cent School Capital Outlay Circacs Item amended, Attachment amended. School Choice and Pupil Assignments Charter Application for Seaside School Consortium Inc. to Open Seaside Charter K-12 Item withdrawn. School Choice and Pupil Assignments Charter Application for Seaside School Consortium to Open Seaside Community Charter School 6-8 Item withdrawn. School Choice and Pupil Assignments Second Amendment to the Seaside School Consortium Inc., the Seaside School Consortium Inc. K-5 Contract Item withdrawn. Is there a motion?
No.
It was moved by Board Member Grimes and seconded by Vice Chair Jones. Any discussion? Seeing none, I call for your vote. By your actions, you approve this seven-zero. Many of you know that Tallahassee wrapped up its legislative session, I think it was on Saturday, or Friday afternoon or Saturday sometime. One of the items that a lot of people were following was the bill that had to do with arming teachers. I would just like to add that the way that that bill reads now is that it's up to school districts to allow teachers to be armed. And this board about a year ago passed a resolution that our intent was not to arm teachers, so I would just like to say that upfront in my chair report at this time. One of my quotes that this board's probably tired of hearing is by Joseph Campbell that says, "The cave you fear to enter holds the treasure that you seek." Bree Brown wrote this, "Whenever we choose courage, we also choose vulnerability, because that's exactly what courage is about: acting in spite of fear and uncertainty." Today is historic. It's historic because we are daring to do what has not been done before. Today draws a line in the sand that allows us as a community to decide if we will invest in public education, like our surrounding counties have decided to do. Today marks the beginning of a new hope and new direction for Duval County Public Schools, and we get to determine what that future looks like. Our resolution is an opportunity for voters to weigh in, and it's this process that keeps government closest to the people. By the way, it was Thomas Jefferson that said, "Government works best when it's closest to the people." If left unaddressed over the next five-year period, our repair costs for facilities will increase to over $1 billion. Simply put, the need to update facility systems, improve information technology, keep our schools safe, replace roofs, carpet, and other maintenance issues will only grow, leaving more schools in disrepair. Granted, we did not reach this point overnight. Years of decreasing PICO dollars, millage rollbacks, and reductions in funding have gotten us here. Perhaps this has not been tackled before because there was always hope of a better day. We can no longer hesitate to take charge and become the good stewards we are entrusted to be. Some of you may be aware of a ruling that came out yesterday that indicates city council can determine when and whether this resolution moves forward to a vote by the public. It is not the desire of this board to enter into an adversarial relationship with another elected body. Rather, we want this to be an opportunity for us to work together in doing what is best for children in our community. I believe we can all agree that education which is stronger, schools that are better, benefit our entire community. Now is the time to make decisions that are long overdue. We must acknowledge that success of our schools has a direct positive impact on our community. We recognize that there are more conversations to have, more community meetings to hold, and stronger relationships to build. But with that being said, we too have a role to play in community partnerships. While public buildings used to dominate the riverfront, the more recent movement has been to move public buildings off the river. And this, if it is economically feasible, I think we would want to be a good community partner by seriously considering that as we continue the conversation regarding facilities, we must be willing to look at all facilities. The key, though, for the school district is economic feasibility. The benefit of being where we are now is that we do not owe or pay anything on this building, so we can literally direct more dollars to the classroom, believe it or not. We don't want that to change, but I'm glad to hear that we are pursuing a third-party market appraisal of this property, and once we have that information, it would be good to have a conversation about what a potential good deal might look like. From my perspective, that idea of a good situation would include three central conditions that I think are important, and I believe you may have heard before. First, the solution must not impose a financial burden on the district now or any time in the future. Second, the solution must not impose a financial burden on taxpayers. Third, we must find a solution that is reasonably accessible to the many constituents of our district. I do hope there is an opportunity for us to pursue a win-win opportunity, and that this might be something we discuss in the future. But whatever we do, it has to be a win from the perspective of our schools and our students. I have no doubt that this board will continue to dare to lead and have courageous conversations which will move education forward in Duval County. Dr. Green?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As Chairwoman Hershey just eloquently explained this historical day about making a decision on voting for a resolution for a referendum, we still have work to do with our communities to help them understand, if that referendum passes, what does that mean for my community? What does it mean for the schools in my community? And many of the schools that we are addressing are in District Four and Five, and those schools, in many instances, are our oldest schools. They're also, in many instances, our most underutilized schools, and the plan is quite complicated when we talk about District Four and Five. And so, we've added additional community meetings. Last night, we had the community meeting at Reebolt High School, and then on Thursday, we will have a community meeting at Raines High School. I'm very proud to say that meeting went very well and was very successful. We got a lot of input, and we did it the old-fashioned way with chart paper, and they really enjoyed that. Not, we went low-tech, and it seemed to work out very well. Part of those community meetings is that I explained how we are at this place and time. So, I talk about why are we pursuing this? We are pursuing a referendum and pursuing a master's facilities plan because of the average age of our facilities. That's the number-one reason. I will continue to tout this, not happily, but we have the oldest facilities in the state of Florida. The average age of our facilities are 44 years by DOE definition, but by the original date of erection of our facilities, they're really over 50 years old, the average age of our facilities. In addition, we are looking at our average monthly maintenance. Currently, we are spending close to a half-million dollars a month on just maintenance for our facilities. We are reviewing resource efficiencies, the increase in student programming, and increase in choice options. When we look at increase in student programming, when you look at our very small schools today, none of them have full-time art, full-time music, or full-time physical education. There are tenorants. And I explained that the reason that there are tenorants is because it now sort of levels the field between really large schools who only have one art, one music. And so, when we look at consolidation, that will allow us to increase student programming by having a full-time art teacher, full-time music, full-time physical education teacher, as well as there are increased choice options. We are a state of school choice. Duval County has over 60 dedicated magnets, as well as 33 charter schools. Tonight, on the agenda, there are seven charter schools that you will vote, and so the potential is that we will go from 33 to 39 charter schools. And as parents continue to have options, we need to put ourselves in a position that these schools that are much older, underutilized, that we find a way to be more efficient, be able to serve more students, and in addition, have them in a 21st-century facility that allows them the same access to 21st learning for students that have that in schools that are not nearly as old as our veteran school buildings. In addition, we are pursuing this more than just reducing the average age of our facility. We're doing this for a positive impact, one, on recruitment and retention of qualified personnel. We can attract teachers to our school district, but as I tell everyone-- personnel. We can attract teachers to our school district, but as I tell everyone, before they ever meet one student, they see that building first. And they make decisions about whether I want to teach in that building, or, yeah, I don't mind living in Jacksonville, but I'm going to find another school where I feel I, I want to teach. Student and employee health attendance and productivity, the air quality. When you have a building that's over seventy years old, it does not have the same air quality in our school buildings that are much younger in facility age. In addition, constant maintenance to make sure that that air quality is at a level that is ensuring that all of our students and faculty are safe. We do not have any unsafe schools. We have schools that we're constantly having to address their issues so that they remain safe, and that is what that cost is, about a hundred, a hundred, five-hundred million a month is maintaining those schools so that our students and teachers and, and support staff are, are safe, and they can work in those buildings feeling like their health is not at risk. Student and teacher safety. I just talked about some of those issues, but part of the referendum is to deal with safety and security at every single school. Yes, we, we've done a number of things to our facilities to enhance the safety, but there's more to do. We have more fencing to do to ensure that access to our school facilities allows our students to be safe during the day, and also make it in a way that we are not excluding our community because we have partnerships on dual use of our facilities. So we also have to find ways that they can use our outdoor facilities when school is not in session. And student learning. The student engagement piece becomes more and more prevalent as we move forward in this new age of education. And many of our students still do not have access to Wi-Fi, have their own personal laptops, and we engage learning with them in the classroom that we are using this type of technology, and not all schools is the technology equal. And we need to get to a point where we can use those 21st learning century tools in every one of our schools, and that every student has an opportunity to have access to that. So I, this is part of my presentation that, that I did last night and that I will also do on Thursday to help the community understand what goes into creating a scenario that the third-party cooperative strategies completed for us, and they had to use this same information to develop alternative solutions. We, we had other groups that would say, you know, now, I may not have liked that scenario, but since you've explained it to us, I understand why that was chosen, or I understand why the district is looking at that particular scenario as an option. And then other individuals actually developed alternate scenarios that we will take. Hopefully, in the next couple of weeks, we'll have all of that transcribed and documented, and we will post it on our website and also email it to all of the schools so that they can give that information to parents or have it on their website. So it's accessible to everyone to see the other ideas that are out there. In addition, Ms. Hershey talked about the legislation session has ended. Here are a number of bills that passed, as well as bills that failed. I'm not going to go into each of the bills that passed or failed because we will have a workshop, and our government liaison, Ms. Miller, will go more in depth for each of these bills. But a couple that I do want to point out is, one, the Schools of Hope, Senate Bill Seventy Seventy. The definition of struggling schools has expanded. So under this Senate bill, it says Schools of Hope expands persistently low-performing definition, and that definition indicates that if a school does not have at least three Cs within five years, they are considered persistently low-performing, or a B within the last two years, they would be considered persistently low-performing, and it's five years in the rears, not five years forward. So we, we, we are identifying those schools that even if they were to make a C grade, they will still be identified as persistently low-performing, and also those schools, their, our goal would be for them to be a B or higher to not fall into that category. Teacher certification, Senate Bill also Seventy Seven, Seventy Seventy. Teacher certification now allows additional time for a teacher to obtain a passing score on a general knowledge exam. In the past, that time has been one calendar, school calendar year, no, one calendar year. And now it's been expanded to the length of your temporary certificate, so I believe that will be three years. Now teachers will have an opportunity. And we haven't been given the final cost, but we, it's also been stated that they're going to bring the cost down. For teachers who had to renew, not renew, take their certification if they did not pass, it cost anywhere from a hundred and thirty-five to two hundred dollars, and to do that month, that was definitely quite strenuous for our teachers. Two other bills that passed, Millage Referendum and Capital Certax Referendum. The Millage Referendum HB Seventy-One Twenty-Three and Certax Referendum HB Zero Zero Five. The Certax Referendum that begins January first, twenty twenty, indicates now all Certax Referendums have to be held during a general election. It still remains a majority vote, and it still, as the information I have, remains up to fifteen years. The Millage Referendum has changed in that for any district that goes for a Millage Referendum, which is generally used for operating costs, you must share, charter schools must be a part of your Millage Referendum and, and share those dollars with charter schools based on a per pupil fair share. And so that's just a few of the bills that we will talk more about in the future. As we are, I, I don't know that she says celebrate, but as we are making it fully aware about Mental Health Awareness Month, and that many of our students, sometimes they suffer in silence, and they do not, they may not tell their parents, but they might tell a good friend about issues that they are dealing with. We want to reiterate that we have an app, and this is from the state of Florida, called Fortified Florida. You, I know it says, "Report suspicious activity," but you can also report information that students may want to harm themselves, or students may have talked about suicide, or they may have a drug addiction. You can do it, you can make, you can be anonymous, or you can say who you are and put your phone number. It is manned twenty-four hours a day by the school district and the state of Florida. So we now have this on, well, we always had the information, but now we've taken it from the background and now brought it to the forefront of our website. And it will also be on the forefront of all of our schools' website. And posters will start, maybe in a week or two, start arriving so that, that we will have posters in our schools. So students, parents, community members, anyone can use Fortified Florida to report information. And as I stated, it is manned by the school district and the state of Florida twenty-four hours a day. We have a, a couple of appreciations that have either just passed or were in the middle of. Administrative Professional Day was on April twenty-fourth, and we did a huge celebration for each of our, whether you identify as secretaries or administrative assistants. Mine went home with several bouquets of flowers, and we just wanted to let her know how much we appreciate her. And many times when people think I'm so fantastic, it really is her work behind me, making me and many of our other leaders and our board members look fantastic and, and make things run very well. So if you did not show that it's passed, that was April twenty-fourth, but I'm sure they would not be hurt if you just said, "I'm going to make my own Administrative Professional Day and do something nice for them." But we are in the middle of Teacher Appreciation Week, May sixth through the tenth. Please, if you, if you're any teacher that has impacted your life, is still teaching, or they're retired, or they're, they're still with us on this earth, reach out to them and tell them how much you appreciate what they've, what they've done for you. I hope our students are showing that same appreciation for their teachers because they go far beyond their job description, far beyond whatever their hourly pay would work out to be. They are the ones on the front line who stand and are delivering the future of our country, the future of our global society. And teachers, all too often, are, are sort of an afterthought. We know they're there, we take them for granted, and this is our week to give back to them and show how much we appreciate them and say thank you. They're not in this business for the paycheck. They're in it because of their desire and love for students and academics and education. But we do know that they have to live, and they have to be able to provide for their families. So it does not fall on deaf ears that our teachers in the state of Florida, we are ranked in amongst the lowest as it relates to teacher pay, and we will continue to work as the superintendent, and I know this board, to continue to support our teachers and do what we need to do to support them and their, their, their finances, as well as their culture and climate of their buildings, of, of where they work five days a week and many times on the weekend. So Team Duval loves our administration, administrative professionals and teachers. Current events, just a couple of these have already passed, but I really enjoyed the elementary and middle school art show that was on April sixteenth and seventeenth. Last week, I enjoyed the high school art show. We have some very talented students. There were a couple of pieces that I wish the student was there because I wanted to make an offer to take home and, and put in, in my library, but we, we really have some very talented students. And guess what? They, I love Douglas Anderson, but they don't all go to Douglas Anderson. They're all across this district from all middle, elementary, high schools, but Douglas Anderson also, they, they were all fantastic. To the board, May sixteenth is our employee retirement celebration, so if you, if it's not on your calendar, please try to get it on your calendar if you can attend. And last but not least, the best part of, of our school year is commencement schedule and commencement ceremonies. I am looking forward to my first commencement ceremony in Duval County. And the neat thing is that I've had several high school principals kind of angry that I'm not coming to their commencement, and I said, "Well, you know, we actually have twenty-four commencement ceremonies, and I really can't be everywhere," but it was nice to know that they want us at their commencement cer- ceremony, and they, they are proud to show off our students, and as they walk across that stage, they begin the rest of their life. So parents, community members, if you'd like to attend, that commencement schedule is on our website, and the link, the website is listed on, on the board. Also, our Parent Academy scholarships. We will be giving a thousand-dollar scholarships from our Parent Academy for our seniors. If you are interested in applying, parents, here's a website, a link for them to go to, to put in their application. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We are now on the public comment portion of our meeting. Those wishing to address the board must fill out a blue speaker card. The school board welcomes your comments on matters that are before the board for consideration. It is not the board's intent to respond this evening, but to use this input in our deliberations. To give everyone appropriate respect and courtesy, we ask the audience refrain from audible comments or applause. When you come to the microphone, please state your name for the record. Please limit your comments to three minutes. When the green light in front of you, in front of me starts blinking, you will have a minute remaining. When the light turns yellow, you will have thirty seconds remaining. When it turns red and the buzzer sounds, your time will be up. If your concerns exceed that time, you may present written comments to the board. You are asked to refrain from references to specific individuals and to follow expectations of civil discourse. Please remember that speaker cards were accepted up until six twenty PM. Thank you for taking time to address the board. Our first speakers this eve, this evening will be Darlene Miller, Ted Miller, followed by Earl Kitchling.
Good evening. Since it is Mental Health Awareness Month, I would, thought I'd bring it to the attention of the school board and kind of advocate for our guidance counselors out there. You know, earlier tonight, I was kind of Googling suicide rates among the youth and everything. It came around as statistics. Between like, I came around, it's very hard to talk about, over a thousand children between the ages of five and eleven in their suicide rates and have committed suicide, five to eleven. I don't even know, you know, remembering when I was doing one between five and eleven, playing outside, riding a bicycle all day. I can't imagine the stress that the children nowadays are under. I was asking and inquiring through some people about the guidance counselors, what they're doing at school. Quite frankly, they looked at me and said, "We're in meetings all day. We're not counseling, we're in meetings." I said, "Well, what is your ratio at school?" "One to a thousand in the elementary schools," was what I was told. "One to guidance counselor for every thousand children." You know, the American Guidance Counselors Association recommends one to two-hundred-and-fifty. And I was reading the study that was given to me. Well, within the study, it talks about schools who have the highest ratio, like one to five-hundred. They found that they, on average, they spent sixty percent of their time counseling, the other forty percent in meetings. That's one to five-hundred. And they only get to spend sixty percent of their time counseling. You know, we have a new kind of way about with the technology and the children and the stress and the test scores, and they're under a lot of stress, too. And these guidance councils in the elementary world could be teaching them coping skills, peer relationships, and academic skills. Also found interesting, interesting topic on how schools with guidance counselors and schools with guidance skills, how their academic skills go up, their academic scores rise to the occasion when they are given these abilities to put their stuff and their relationships back together with their peers, with their parents, with their teachers. We need to find this area. This is vitally important. I know we look at it in high school, and sometimes we look at it in elementary school, in middle school, but elementary school needs it, too.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Tim Miller, followed by Earl Kitching, followed by Kenneth Covington.
Hi, my name is Tim Miller, a parent of an ESE child, soon to be graduate. In light of Mental Health Awareness Month, I want to talk about a Vanderbilt University study that tracks autistic adults with an IQ over seventy. So these are high-functioning kids. As they grew up, it tracked them over twelve years. Found twenty-four point seven percent were consistently employed or in post-secondary education. Forty-two and a half percent were sometimes employed. Forty-two and a half percent were sometimes employed or in post-secondary. But thirty-two point nine percent were never employed and never in post-secondary education. Thirty-two point nine percent of these kids basically are doing nothing. They're not being productive. They don't know what, they don't know how to cope in the world. And that's a failure of us preparing them to be adults. Some of the statistics I shared last month for Autism Awareness Month. Autistic kids, hundred and seventeen percent higher occurrences of anxiety, hundred and twenty-three percent higher occurrences of depression, four hundred and thirty-three percent higher occurrences of attempted suicide. It's because we're not preparing these kids. Not only, you know, the study is not just social skills. It's daily living skills. There's a difference. What did you have to do to get ready to go to work today? I had to get up, had to take a shower, had to get dressed. These are very difficult for autistic kids. And it's not just autism, it's other disabilities as well. Autism is just the one that I'm most familiar with. The al- the study also showed as IQs go up, that gap in social skills and daily living skills increases. We need to keep the caseloads low for the specialists that are helping them so that we don't have these kids end up being the seventy-five percent that are sometimes are never employed or those that just give up and attempt suicide. It's critical that we need to, to help these kids now before they get to that position. On the, the half cent, I do think we should go for it. I think it's something that we should have done a long time ago. But the board has put it forward and will back off. I appreciate this board's courage to push it forward. I know there's some disagreements for some areas of the, of the community, but I feel we really do need to just move forward and work through the community concerns because they are valid. But we need, we've got to do this. If we don't take care of them, the schools will fall down and then it's even more of a mess. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Earl Kitching, followed by Kenneth Covington.
Thank you, Madam Chair, ladies and gentlemen of the school board, Madam Superintendent. Again, thank you for an opportunity to address you about our concerns as members of the Rains High School Nation and for the overall process of improving our schools continues to go forward. We need a total commitment. We want that commitment to be fair, equitable, transparent, honest, and we want it to have the highest level of integrity. Improving our schools within the boundaries of Duval County is a great thing and we must do that. We don't want to fail our schools because if we fail our schools, we fail our children. And we don't want to fail our children. So, we are looking forward to moving forward with you in this process. And after hearing from our Rains community and the Rains Nation, and after hearing from over three thousand petition signers, we do want you to know that those people who signed those petitions gave us a consensus in a, in a community meeting. And the consensus was no, we do not want Rains to become a sixth to twelfth. We want it to remain Rains Senior High School. However, we do believe in collaboration and we also believe in working with this board. Let us be a part of that conversation. Let us be a part of your ideas. Hear our ideas so that we can make the best decision. Not for one student, not for a few students, but all the students of the Rains feeder pattern and this school district. We want it to be inclusive and we want it to be functional so that it is, again, a win-win situation for everyone concerned. We will not, and we must not allow anything to happen to our children in this school district, especially the lack of their academic achievement levels being raised as high as the national standards. So, we look forward to working with you. However, please understand that we will take whatever steps we need to take in order to make sure that we get what we want. In the words of the late, great humanitarian Muhammad Ali, and I will paraphrase his statement, "I believe that children are still our future. We must teach them well and they will be the best future we can have." Thank you.
Thank you very much. Kenneth Covington, followed by Ricky Grace Senior, followed by LaShonda Holloway.
Again, it's Kenneth Covington and to the Chair, Superintendent, and the Board. Again, we thank you for the opportunity to come speak. We are representative of the Rains National Alumni Association. And again, what President Kitchin has stated to you is a position that we as a group have been collaborating on. But, and he really said, I thought he wasn't going to be here and I was going to say that, but since he showed up. I do want to share with you that we are aware of the challenges. We know that for public schools that, you know, charter schools and, and private schools and other things are, are real challenges for us. But you, as a board, were elected to do a job. And we're proud of what you're doing so far and we look forward to you continuing to do that. To take care of our children and their education. There are other elected officials that have been elected for other reasons. Children are within their constituency also. But we hope that you as our school board is going to stand up and fight for what's necessary. And with this referendum that's coming up, we know there will be pushback. We know that large portions of it will be needed in District Four and Five. And because of historical neglect and that Four and Five didn't get what they should have gotten during those times, it's necessary corrections. And we hope that you all will stand up and know that to make the entire school system better by taking care of those who have the least and need the most at this time is what we want to work with you and be on board to push for and to support that effort. But as President Kitchin said, we want to work with you and make sure that we're coming up with a solution that's good for the community and our kids. And we want to be in lockstep with you to make that a reality. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Ricky Grace, followed by LaShonda Holloway and Chris Garry.
I am Ricky Grace Senior. There's a junior. I have two sons, graduated Rains High School. I happen to be a proud graduate in nineteen seventy. And one of the things I was tasked with, because you know, you go to the grocery store and you try to do things that people give me pages of, but I wanted to give you a short synopsis of what I've been asked to pass on to you, the grocery list. It's brief. But as in the case of my mother-in-law and other people I know, that if you want to go somewhere to eat, they usually tell you what they don't want. And that doesn't help a lot of times. So, so what do you want? You'll be riding around all day and not actually eat. So, what has been presented to me are a few things, but largely more along the lines of renovation. People were pleased with what has happened over at Lee High School. The result is positive and the kids didn't lose a day of school. They actually went through the renovation and they're actually graduating. And that is something I think would be worthwhile considering at Rains and the other schools rebuilt as well. And in addition to that, I was pretty much insistent because I have other people who graduated with me and other people who have been successful from Rains High School, who sometimes there's a misnomer that if you have skills, that you don't have intellect. And I have to tell you that my one-time CPA is a hell of a car mechanic. And I'd rather for him to work on my car than to work on my books. But that's the world we live in. We have to be able to eat. And so, I'd like to have our kids and others would like to have our kids. When I was at Rains, we had access to industrial arts, graphic art, auto mechanics. And you could not be able to tell and sit from one child to another as to which path was going to feed them. If you're good in math, that didn't mean that you weren't a great plumber, but you don't know what's going to feed you. And so, that, that would be a, something that could be accomplished. We would like to see some of those things that were taken away from Rains and sent to the skills centers brought back to Rains. In addition to computer-assisted designing, more preparation for the future. In addition to that, the Northwestern feeder pattern, I understand that's had a history of some problems. Perhaps in converting the skills center to more of a middle school, seventh, eighth grade scenario. And suggested also was renovations at one of the elementary schools, George Washington Carver, and have that serve as like a K through four. As well as one of the other schools, Rufus C. Payne perhaps, becoming, one, one second. Perhaps more in line with head start preparation. So, kids get a core education before they get into the K through four and then fifth and sixth grade scenarios. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. LaShonda Holloway, followed by Chris Garry and Clifford Wilson.
Good evening, Superintendent Green, Chairwoman Hershey, members of the board. My name is LaShonda Holloway and I stand here this evening as not only an alumnus, an alumna of William Marion Rains High School, but I also stand here as a constituent of School Board District Four. I am standing here today because it is incumbent upon this district to understand the maturation level of sixth graders and seventh graders. I stand here in opposition to case, I'm saying, I stand here in opposition to sixth through twelfth graders being consolidated in your master facilities plan. Further, I spoke with several students at Rains High School and those students don't, those students don't think it's a great idea either. I spoke with one tenth grader in particular who is an honor roll student who said to me, "Miss LJ, I went to the administrators and told them that I was being bullied and they did nothing." And if a tenth grader who is an honor roll student feels, feels that kind of pressure going to school because of their safety, how do you think a sixth grader, a seventh grader, and perhaps even an eighth grader would feel matriculating at a school with people who are, with, with students who are trouble? Let's just be honest. We know that the, we know that this district, in particular Districts Four and Five, have, have students with the highest rate of disciplinary actions. I don't think that it is a good plan, nor do the students think that it's a good plan. And I would hope that when you decide to vote, that you would take in consideration the safety and the security of the students. I believe that it's also been stated that Lee High School was, Lee High School was eighty-seven years old when this district invested thirty-five million dollars to renovate that school. While we understand that Rains High School is fifty-four years old, I would encourage this district to do the same for William Marion Rains High School as it did for Robert E. Lee High School, who was not only older and has, has an older history. But I would hope that you would also consider Rains High School for renovations. Thank you for your time. And regarding, I'm sorry, regarding the referendum that's supposed to be placed on the ballot, it's my understanding that the city charter has now removed that power from your hands. But I would be happy to hear from the board how you plan to implement the master facilities plan when you have thirty-three charters, sixty-six magnet programs, and the addition of six more. If these schools have already had the least and have already been neglected, I'd like to know, how, how will you promise the community that you will in fact implement the renovations or the repairs that need to be done in these districts? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Chris Garry, followed by Clifford Wilson and Jean Miller.
Good evening, Chris Garry. In two thousand eight, I submitted an op-ed to the Florida Times-Journal where I said we needed a half-cent sales tax to pay for edu- to pay for education issues. Over the next dozen years, I have written countless blogs and letters to the editor and politicians talking about the need for additional funding. In my mind, it is hynous how Tallahassee has underfunded our schools and children. I believe it is equally terrible that Jacksonville hasn't been given the opportunity to step up and that it is shameful that the city attorney, most likely on the orders of the mayor, has attempted to supersede your authority. But what should we expect from a mayor who time and time again has turned his back on public education in support of privatization? I also think it should be applauded after the inaction of previous boards and previous superintendents for starting this very needed conversation. In my mind, and the minds of many, Duval has two equally important issues. A crumbling and aging infrastructure and a staff that is underpaid. Our teachers are some of the lowest paid in large urban districts and many of our support personnel, personnel aren't being paid a living wage. I hope going forward, we recognize and acknowledge this reality and we look to correct it as well. You see, we don't have just one problem, we have many, and we should come up with solutions that help solve them all. I have a lot more thoughts on this, but I'll keep them to myself. I would like to quickly address charter schools. Today's agenda, I believe, has six charter schools up for approval. This does not make sense to me as the recent floated plans have the district eliminating, consolidating over a dozen schools. If the district believes it already has more schools than it needs, why would it even consider approving a half dozen more? There has to be a better reason to opening up a school than just because they can and they can fill out an application. There has to be a need for those schools. I looked at all the proposals. Almost all of the new charters want to open up near schools that had a C grade or higher. And only two were ninety percent or greater over capacity. The long and short of it is those communities do not need more schools. I know you could all point to the state and its pro-charter policies. Well, I want to remind you, you do not represent the state. You represent the people of Jacksonville. You've been elected to be stewards of both their investment and the future of our children. If you cannot honestly say with certainty that these new charter schools are a better investment or will do a better job, then you are obligated to turn down their applications. I urge you to stand up for the school system you are elected to represent it and say no to these charter applications. Somebody has to say no and it should be all of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Clifford Wilson, followed by Jean Miller and Beverly Flanagan.
Good afternoon, and I'm glad to be here. Appreciate your time, that I've given this speech to the board. But just to take, you know, keep it short and clean. The way the education system is set up in this country is conducive to black children. Education system, if you're going to teach somebody something, you're supposed to know it yourself. That way you guarantee, we all say we love a churn. I got plenty of churn. I got grand churn. Probably they have great grants. But the deal is, give the children a start. Why you think all these churn acting out of school? Because they know what they're getting in school ain't true. Education system is skewed. You got two histories. We need to get it down to one. We get it near the true history, then you have churn bored, acting out of school. They'll be loving to learn. If you're learning something worthwhile, learn it. If you're learning a skewed, double-paced history, that's like having two sets of books. Books you sold to government and then the books you keep yourself. Let's get away with all the double books. Let's get one history book, true history book. Tell about the true world and stop this mixing it, you know, double. Kids are not fools. They're not stupid. Even the scriptures out of miles of bays and fools what profess truth. They know when they're hitting the truth, they know they're not getting no truth. They know that they hit, especially black children. Black, more black children going to prison, getting robbed, killed, killing than any other time. You know why? Because they know it ain't right. I'm sixty-two years old. Know how I found out that the education system is all screwed up? My reading is better than bad. Y'all can go and hit your history. Clifford W. Wilson. YouTube. Took me sixty-two years watching YouTube to know that, guess what? The education system has been screwing me around the whole time. My history ain't been right. The history I've been taught been right and here it is. Television, history. Let's stop going with the television and the history and bring out the true history. Make people start making the brother, the young brothers and sisters start feeling good about theirself and start to bad about theirself. And you'll see this world will get a little better. That's all I got to say. For real, y'all need to get this thing right.
Thank you. Jean Miller, followed by Beverly Flanagan and Carrie Esch- Eschleman.
Setting my own timer. Good evening. My name is Jean Miller. Address is thirty-one West Adams Street, Suite Two of Four, Jacksonville, Florida. I'm the president and CEO of the Jacksonville Civic Council. I'm here to you today on behalf of eighty CEOs representing over two billion dollars worth of the payroll in our local community, three hundred thousand local employees, and over two hundred million annually to our nonprofit community. The Civic Council studies long-term, complex public policy issues, works from a place of fact after research to implement solutions with the community stakeholders. of fact after research to implement solutions with the community stakeholders. We've been involved very much with public education reform since twenty sixteen and have been working on best practices solutions to improve public education system. We have also engaged in a comprehensive study of the Duval County tax base. As I have communicated with each of you yesterday and with Dr. Green, we have, based on preliminary, publicly available data, we have, we have examined the half-cent sales tax proposal as well as the facilities master plan. We applaud you for taking a great step forward to address the declining needs of capital structures in the school district. There is no doubt that many of our structures are the oldest in the state and are in great need of repair. With that said, you have also addressed underutilized schools, and that is no easy task. We applaud you for these efforts and, but we ask you that based on our initial analysis, we also have several observations we would like to offer, the observations and recommendations and also offer our assistance. First, the pure per pupil price, easy to say, hard to say, the per pupil price of the plan as it current stands is thirty to thirty-five thousand dollars per student, for current students enrolled in Duval County Public Schools. That price is high and seems to be out of line with acceptable construction practices. Last year, the Florida Legislature allows school districts at the behest of school districts to construct schools according to charter school standards. That's in House Bill Seventy Fifty-Five. With those standards, the pure pupil cost for charter schools is anywhere from twelve to fifteen thousand dollars. That is a roughly, off the top of our heads, at least thirty percent decrease that could be at least decrease in the amount of the plan as it is proposed today. We would ask you to reexamine the underlying cost assumptions and work to enhance the cost efficiency for our Duval County taxpayers and most of all for our students. Second, setting aside the schools, and that, that sets aside the schools, there are a few new schools that must be constructed to emergency shelter standards. We have examined that data. There are a few, and those standards should be complied with. There will be a different cost differential to that, and we would ask to, to examine those numbers.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The remainder of my comments are contained in the communication to you that was sent yesterday. Thank you.
Beverly Flanagan, followed by Carrie Eschelmann, followed by Denise Scott.
Good evening, and thank you for giving a parent an opportunity to voice, voice her opinion. I feel very lucky that my children have gone through Duval County Public Schools. They've taken advantage of some of the wonderful magnet programs that we have. And in my case, Lavilla School of the Arts and Douglas Anderson, one child graduated last year, the other one will graduate this year and have had an exceptional education. They are in an instrumental music program, and I know I can't mention names, but I'm just here as a parent because I find it very upsetting that we have some outstanding instrumental music professionals that are teaching in our schools. One of the reasons we're so great is we have great teachers and, and there are budget cuts, I know that. And we are looking at letting some of our most valuable and instrumental leaders and educators possibly go or be reassigned to different schools. So I'm only here as a parent to say, we've been so successful, I'd like to see this continue. Let's make sure that we're utilizing the talent that we are lucky enough to have in our schools and have it, what's the right word? Make sure that all students can benefit from the knowledge and, and information that they can pass on and make our students great. So anyway, just wanted to have an opportunity to say thank you for the education my children have gotten, but would like to see it continue and to make sure that teacher reassignments are looked at seriously and that it's in the best interest of our students. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Carrie Eschelmann, followed by Denise Scott and Michael Anderson.
Madam Chair, Board Members and Superintendent Dr. Green, I have thirty years plus career in education from St. Lucie County as a paraprofessional teacher, counselor, administrator. And my new career is a beautiful one here in Duval County as a grandparent of students in your district and a volunteer mentor in your schools. Both of my daughters are also veteran teachers in Duval County as well. And all of this has given me a three hundred sixty degree perspective of what's working in the schools. I commend, I commend all of you for having the foresight and the courage to pass a resolution that places the referendum for improving our facilities on the ballot tonight. You'll be asking the voters to do what's right and to do what Duval deserves. Neighboring counties and districts all over the state of Florida have initiated and passed these referendums in recent years. I recall as a principal, having to deal with rundown, old, unsafe facilities, the resulting safety and security issues, and managing the shifting and student populations, all while competing with surrounding districts that had larger budgets for upgraded facilities. And this sounds to me like the Duval story. Your efforts along with the passing of this referendum will address these issues. It will provide quality facilities for all students while maximizing the use of every school, and in the long run, that saves money. Teachers need today's tools for students to prepare them for tomorrow's world, world, excuse me. Our parents and grandparents need to know that they send their children to safe schools and taxpayers want to know that they're spending their money wisely while investing in our community. The climate is ripe for public support of a referendum they've been passing throughout our state. Also, it's no secret that there is a historic and alarming teacher shortage in our country, in the state of Florida, and in our district. According to the FEA, only one percent of college students even express a mild interest in becoming a teacher, and only fifteen percent of stu-, teachers who finish their first year return for a second year. Duval needs to tackle one aspect of this problem head-on by improving the work environment for all employees and students to retain and attract quality educators. I was absolutely shocked and let down by the city attorney when I read the Florida Times Union in an article about whether or when a Duval tax vote will happen. It discussed that state law says that a referendum shall be placed on the ballot. However, the attorney says that shall sometimes means may, with no guarantee of an action. Shoot. I had a great point to make.
Do you have like a sentence left, or does it longer?
Yes. I proctored the FSA this week, and if a student was asked the definition of shall and that definition was given, they would have the wrong answer. That would not have been a very good distractor.
Thank you.
Shall does not mean maybe.
Thank you very much. Denise Scott, followed by Michael Anderson and Wendy Collins.
Good evening, I'm Denise Scott. Want to address the board today to honor my teachers. We've had a great week at school. I am a product of Duval County Public Schools, class of nineteen seventy-seven. My child, my steps, um, stepsons, my grandchild has already graduated, and I have one that graduates this year, so proud to be a part of DCPS. I'm also an employee of DCPS, thirty-three years. I'm going to retire soon, hopefully December. But I just want to say that I noticed that I transferred from one classification, um, classification to another, from UOPD to Para. My choice, I understood what was going on, but I understood that we don't get paid for all of the holidays. Now, it's a holiday, those kids are out of school, we're out of school, and I just didn't understand why we didn't get paid. I did address that to, um, to our union because I know that we're coming up with negotiations this year, but I also wanted to make sure that the board knew that. The last time I addressed Duval County, the school board, it was over twenty years ago, and it was about pay. We were at an impasse, and I wrote a letter to the editor, and one of the points that I made in that letter and to the board was when I go to the store to buy a loaf of bread, it costs me the same just like it costs anyone else. You talked about how our teachers are one of the lowest paid people in the, um, the state. Our support people are one of the lowest paid people too, because without, my husband is deceased now, but without the help of him, working thirty-three years on this pay would not have been possible. But, you know, even in his death, he still takes care of me, but I'm glad to say that you have to do better by the support personnel, because some people, even your UOPD, they're the data entry clerks, if they don't get your focus right in order to get schools started, to get the schedules in, school don't get started. I also wanted to address consolidation. We know it has to be done, there's a lot of things that have to be done, we do have a lot of old schools, but I just want you to take in consideration a lot of the schools that you're closing, that those children are going to have to be bused. A lot of those parents don't have transportation, and if they miss the bus, they're going to miss a day out of school. If they're sick, how they're going, how the parents going to pick them up? Then you want parental involvement, how you going to do that if the school is two, three? I read somewhere, just looking at a scenario from Monday's, I think it's almost four miles. So you have to consider that, when you're closing these schools, you're going to shut down a whole neighborhood, and they're going to be stagnated. Just want you to keep that in mind.
Thank you very much. Michael Anderson, Wendy Collins, and Latasha Hobbs.
Faith leader with, with the, uh, 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 northeast Florida, uh, uh, district of the U, U, United Methodist Church, uh, uh, we here, uh, uh, stand, stand, stand in a, in a, in a solidarity with the people of Raines and Reval, and, 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 uh, 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 and, uh, 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 oppose con, con, solid, solid, solidation of these schools in, in, in a, in, in a, to a, uh, six through twelve, uh, 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 thing. We, 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 we are also saddened and, and basically grieving about, uh, about, uh, what, what has happened this, uh, school year. We, 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 we have had a, 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 a thirteen percent, uh, 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 hot, hot, highest rate of, uh, of, uh, of, uh, of, uh, su- suspension of our African-American, uh, and, and, and basically, uh, uh, black and brown people of color here in, uh, uh, Duval County. Uh, we, 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 we have also heard from teachers as, uh, at, 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 as well as students about, uh, uh, about the, uh, the, uh, the, uh, the whole, whole, whole issue of arming teachers, uh, here in, uh, uh, Duval County. Uh, we, we, we as a, uh, uh, conference, and, 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 uh, and, at, as a di- district, uh, uh, the, 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 the imminently, uh, 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 oppose arming teachers, uh, 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 we, we need more, 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 uh, more, uh, counselors in schools, not more cops. Also, uh, uh, as a, uh, uh, fellow, uh, uh, dream defender, in, uh, in, uh, in, uh, twenty-twelve, a, 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 a black, black, blackmail student was, uh, was, was, uh, uh, su- 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 suspended from school for quote, acting out. Uh, he was then, then, uh, then, uh, then, uh, then, uh, uh, brought on a bus, uh, to a, to a, to be with his, uh, 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 father in Sanford. He, he was then targeted and killed by, 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 by a racist idiot, uh, uh, and, and, and again, uh, he, his, uh, the, uh, the, uh, the, uh, the, the, the student's name was Trayvon Martin. We do not want another Trayvon Martin here in Duval County. We cannot handle that. Please do something to save our black and brown students and all students. They're all God's creatures. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Wendy Collins, followed by Latasha Hobbs.
There are so many things I want to talk about today, and it seems like it all comes together into one particular thing that's going on in our actual county. First, I want to say that I do not agree with basically combining middle school with high school kids. One of the great things about my son when he went to Kirby is that sixth graders are actually housed separately even from the seventh and eighth graders. And when you actually see these children coming from elementary, some of them are so small, even compared to your eighth graders. Can you imagine what it would feel like as that child coming from elementary school and being with high school students? That's the first thing. I mean, it, we're putting our kids into situations where they're having to grow up too soon, too fast. There are things that sixth graders should not even be privy to that tenth graders, eleventh graders, and twelfth graders do. That's first and foremost. And I definitely don't understand why it always comes down to District Four and Five is the one that you guys are wanting to do this to. Why aren't we doing it across the river? Why? Because those teachers prob-, I mean, those parents would probably be here raising Cain right now? Because these, like they say, are black and brown children. So we're going to put him that, one more step further behind. Don't do that. The other thing I want to talk about is, of course, I know what you guys have said about arming teachers. I want to say, please do not sell us out because of infrastructure to the city council. And the reason I say that is because I've gone to legislation in Tallahassee, and that is what happened with criminal justice reform. The legislature said, we'll pass criminal justice reform, but you guys don't fight us on the gun laws. And that's exactly where we're at. And I actually heard it from someone while I was going to Tallahassee. So I understand that we need to make our schools up to standards, but don't think that, you know, a healthier, safer school is any better off than bringing guns into it, because the fact is, you can put the best roofs, you can have the best computers in the school, but that gun is going to take it all away. That's why I can't get people to understand is your education, your amount of food, better jobs, all that can be taken away from guns. Do you know how many shootings we've had today alone? Two. And one was by an elementary school. Now, there's fifty-seven million dollars right now that was set aside for the guardian program. Don't sell us out because you guys need extra money to fix the schools and getting that for hardening, and that's how you're going to fix the schools either. Please do not do that. Do not let the city council do that. It's not an if, and, or, but, it, no. So I'm just asking, please do not do that. We will give you the half a cent sales tax. Let the citizens of Jacksonville help you with that, but don't sell us out.
Thank you very much. Latasha Hobbs.
Hi, good evening. Latasha Hobbs, mother of Maurice Hobbs, my address is on file. I stand before you today, hoping that you oppose arming our teachers. There's a lot of good things in SB Seventy Thirty, but arming teachers is definitely not one of them. Our teachers are already underfunded. They, we are already at a shortage for educators. Our teachers are very stressed out. We also know that racial bias is in our Duval County Public Schools. I have an issue with, quit, Josiah. I have an issue with a teacher having, possibly having a very stressful day, and it just also happens to be a stressful day, not so good day for one of our black and brown children. And because she has a gun on her hip, and she feels as if she has had enough, she opens fire in that classroom. I have a problem with that. I don't need a microphone. More guns doesn't equal less crime, less shootings. Bullets don't deter. My son was brutally murdered while walking outside. He would have graduated last year, but because of the mountains of Jacksonville Guard, he can't. Standing ground is also going to apply for SB Seventy Thirty, and we all know that it disproportionately affects our minorities, which is our black and brown children. So let's just say that there's a shooter on campus. Let's say that teacher feels as if he or she... Let's say that teacher feels as if he or she has the right to shoot because she wants to protect the children. So she discharges her, he or she discharges that firearm. As they're aiming for the shooter who's shooting out the classroom and in the school, straight bullets hit five, six other students. And they fall victim to gun violence. The shooter ends up arrested, but these five or six children are laying their lives in the woods. Every single mother and father of those children would never see justice, not in this lifetime. Because according to the standing ground law, they are considered collateral damage. Now, I don't know if all of you are parents, or if you have children or grandchildren, but if you do, I believe their lives are more valuable than collateral damage. Walking in here, I noticed that you cannot bring a firearm in this building unless you are law enforcement. You obviously value your lives, so why not value the lives of our children and your students?
Thank you.
Don't live in a harm's way.
Thank you very much. Thank you. It is now time for comments from parent organizations. I see Ms. Tutt with the PTA. Is Mr. Hawk here tonight? With the District Advisory Council?
Good evening. Felita Tutt, Duval County Council, PTA. Hello to the board, Dr. Green. I, it looks like we're all on the same page as far as our mental health. That has been our focus this year, mental health, suicide prevention, and vaping and juuling is what the kids call it now. So that has been our focus this year and it seems like that's been the focus of a lot of speakers that have come up here. And I know Duval is on the same page with mental health and our suicide prevention. We have also worked on the Teacher of the Year Committee this year, the Calendar Committee, many other committees that we've been working on. So we thank you for inviting us and having us to be a part of those committees. And we're hoping that you could add some students to those committees also to get some of their input with what's going on in our district. So we just wanna thank you, thank you, thank you for all that you do and we will continue to work together. We look forward for another great year next year. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Hawk?
Madam Chairman, Superintendent, members of the board, as you may know or may not know because of the beard, I am Michael J. Hawk. Bring you greetings from the District Advisory Council. Our meeting was April the 12th, 2019, April the 29th, 2019. And after various celebrations from a lot of different areas, which included into the year's school programs, academic signing days, and various assemblies, we moved on and we were honored with the presence of none other than the Honorable Elizabeth Anderson. Thank you for coming. She was great. She informed us of the ongoing discussion that is taking place concerning the facilities and the meeting that would have took place on last night at Rebalt and the one that is gonna take place on Thursday at Rains. And the urgency of doing what was necessary due to what may be passed in the legislators concerning changing the way that we would be able to tax from a majority to two-thirds, which now I understand that that is not the same because that portion of that did not pass. We were also honored with the presence of Ms. Felita Tutt from PTA. She may have left. Which is, she's also a part of the District Advisory Council, but had not been shown because she didn't know that we wanted her to be there. So I made that known to her. We have one more meeting left for the year and we've met our requirements, but the reason we're continuing to meet until the end of the school year is so that we can gain information and also disseminate information concerning what we're doing with facilities. And so please keep the information coming because as SAC chairs and area chairs, we're making sure that our schools are informed. Thank you and enjoy.
Thank you. Is anyone here, Mr. Eagle with the Parent Advisory? Anybody here or Erin Hutchinson? Nobody? Do we have, I saw Terry Brady earlier. Is Terry Brady, did you wanna speak?
That's not Terry. I figured that out.
I V W. Terry and I are both here and she allowed me graciously to go first. We're gonna, I'll warm up the crowd for her. Good evening, Madam Chair, Board Members, Dr. Green. Had the opportunity, I got several things to talk about and I'll try to move through them pretty quickly, but I had the opportunity to attend the School Related Employee of the Year Awards last month. Congratulations to all the winners and thank you for giving them the opportunity to be recognized. Last year at this meeting, after attending my first of those ceremonies, I spoke and expressed my disappointment that there wasn't a maintenance or consolidated services category. And I guess unfortunately, I'm disappointed to say that I'm reporting tonight that I'm disappointed that there was not a maintenance or consolidated services category. Maybe next year. There were some remarks tonight from several places, even from the DIAS, about the growing cost of maintenance to our schools. I've stood up here numerous times and pointed out that Duval Schools has a practice of subcontracting maintenance work that can be done in-house by our employees, by our members. And they are paying those subcontractors more than they're paying our workforce. The IVW has, you know, several times posited a number of ideas that we could use, or that we do use in other places, that could allow us to do more work in-house for much less money. So I'd really like, once again, to continue that talk in the upcoming negotiations. The Council of Great City Schools last October put out its 2016-17 Managing Results Survey. Once again, Duval Maintenance Department received recognition. Four hundred and thirty-one schools are on that list and Duval was in the best quartile for cost of routine maintenance per work order. And when you go on through that report, you see there's a cost per student renovations, which is basically how much we spend divided up by student on renovating our facilities. We were in the bottom quartile on that. We were in about the middle of the road on major maintenance per student cost. In new construction per student cost, 2014-15, we were the third lowest in the report in the nation. In 15-16, we moved up to eighth lowest in the nation. The last two years, we haven't provided any data on that piece of, or that piece of the survey, so there isn't, there are no numbers, but I'd be inclined to say that we're probably still low in new construction, or new construction expenditures. And our overall maintenance and operation cost per student is one of the lowest in the country. And that's kind of a mixed statement. We have, you know, we have a great staff, we have great workers, we have great people doing the job, but we're, you know, we're at the same time, we're, you know, we're still struggling because we're working on older and older facilities. But one bright spot is that our workforce has the, one of the lowest time to complete a work order in the survey. With an average of ten days to complete a work order, we are down around the bottom, the best ten, top ten of four hundred and thirty schools in the list. So our buildings are getting older, our investment in renovation spending is very low comparatively, and yet our workers are getting the job done quickly and efficiently. Lastly, while it's not particularly an IBW-specific issue, on the subject of the capital improvement referendum, as not just an employee representative, but a parent of four students in the district, I wanna say that the board has an opportunity tonight to take a bold first step. By transforming our district from a great district despite our old facilities, despite our low pay, despite our understaffing issues, to an amazing district because we have great teachers, students, administration, maintenance, custodial workers, that are doing their jobs in newer facilities for respectable wage in an environment where they are happy, safe, and respected. I commend the board and Dr. Green for having the intestinal fortitude to bring this proposed referendum, and I hope tonight you stand together and vote strongly and unanimously to ask for this referendum. That being said, please don't stop there. I know there's a lot of talk about saving money on maintenance and overhead with these proposed new facilities. Those savings, if even realized, are far in the future and will not likely help improve the conditions for the students or staff anytime soon. Please vote tonight to start the process, but then keep showing that courage by finding other revenue streams to increase wages, benefits, and staffing levels. The more than twenty-five-hundred local members of the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers and the thousands of members of the North Florida Building and Construction Trades Council stand in support of this referendum and will continue to stand behind you if you stand up to seek a millage increase to finish the job of turning Duval County Public Schools from a diamond in the rough to a fine-cut, polished gemstone that we know it can be. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Brady?
Good evening, Madam Chairman, members of the school board, and our superintendent. Before I get started, I just wanna bring a special shout-out to Councilwoman Joyce Morgan, who's just gotten re-elected and we're glad you're there and we hope you can be one of our advocates to define shall versus may among your peers. We'll be glad to help you. Right? I wanna thank each of you for the courage that you're standing and what you're getting ready to do tonight to pass a referendum on to our City Council to do what's right for our students and our employees of this district. Ladies and gentlemen, when I started my teaching career, I chose to remain at a school before leaving to go to work at the union right around the corner from Altell Stadium. Didn't know that it was at that time in a second school district in Duval County. It was a school and it had students who were happy and had students who wanted to learn and had parents that sent me their best that they had every day to my class to learn. I loved my school where I taught and it was old then and it is still old now. I didn't know that there were, at that term, boutique schools in Duval County till I got sent to a workshop over there. And when I walked in and saw that the school had air conditioning, I did not. And when I saw that it had a utility room and a resource room and it had grease boards instead of black boards that most of the time ours were cracked, and I saw the technology that they had even back then versus now, it made me sad. It made me sad for my students and our community where I chose to remain to teach every day. This is a bold statement about what y'all are getting ready to do tonight. And I know, I know in my heart, back then and now, as much as the school board has tried to balance the economic dispersment of funds through this district, we have a limited amount of resources that we have. The people of this county want a true quality, high standard of public schools for our employees and our students. With the passage of this referendum tonight, this resolution to move forward, I think it is starting the process where frankly, other school boards have not had the courage to do that. So thanks to each of you. But make no means about it, I know it is going to be a challenge and it's going to be a battle. So far in the state of Florida, twenty-one counties in this state since last November has passed either a extended referendum or a new referendum. And three and a half weeks ago, St. Lucy was the most recent. Some have been half since, some have been half mills or full mills. St. Lucy conducted theirs with a paper ballot, special election, and the monies was generated for a mill increase for their staff and employees, not just teachers, staff and all employees, mental health necessities for our students, and safety personnel to make sure the schools have the proper individuals there in the schools to protect their precious valuable students that they had coming before them every day in these classrooms. I'm very disappointed that we stand here before you today without a mill increase for our salaries for all employees in this district and for not passing a half mill for our mental health awareness and for safety personnel, and it will not be appearing on the ballot sooner than later. I believe that we need to stand tall and have courage like you've done with the referendum for the capital outlay. We all know right now that a half a mill will generate twenty-eight to thirty million dollars per year, and it's only good for four years. But twenty-eight to thirty million dollars for our personnel currently right now from the Property Assessments Office here in Duval County. We must be able to compete for the best and the brightest of our teachers because in the other urban districts, as was stated earlier, people are not going into education any longer and they're not making it a career like I have chose to do and many of our employees in this district has chosen to do. Their beginning salaries are better than ours, their overall salaries are better than ours, and we must, we must become competitive so that we can bring the best and the brightest in our county, as the superintendent spoke about earlier in her comments and remarks. Thank you, Madam Superintendent. But we must do this in a collaborative effort and not piecemeal. The days of stacking them deep and teaching them cheap is over with. There are people in this county that are elected officials that want nothing more than our district to become a chartered county. Well, guess what? Shame on them. Because some of those same individuals, their students are in our public schools, but they're boutique schools. And we all know where they are and who they are. So why wouldn't we want the same for all of our students in this county and for our employees? We can't fill, we have over a hundred-plus positions of paraprofessionals in our ESE department because we can't fill those positions because their pay is not a quality of education, it's not a quality of life salary. We can't recruit them and then keep them for the amount of work that they're doing. And then our office personnel and our construction workers, and I'm gonna tell you, and our administrators are being recruited to go out of state, to become principals, and in other counties surrounding us. We have to balance the needs of our district when it comes to construction, all employees' salaries and benefits, and the needs of our students in each individual classroom. I think the overall people in this county are ready to stand up and say enough's enough. Florida Legislature hadn't come forth with us to help meet our needs, so it's time that we step up and meet our needs now. I encourage you and I will support you in any way to pass this resolution today. Let's get it on the ballot sooner than later. Our students and our employees don't deserve to wait another year so that they shall have a chance to vote on this. We need to make sure that they do have the opportunity to vote on this so we can continue to grow our high quality of public education. Thank you very much, members of the school board, and as always, myself and the members of Duval Teachers United and everybody that is supporting us will stand ready to stand with you arm-in-arm, to go door-to-door, to do whatever it takes to make sure that we get the necessary funds to make sure that our schools are improved and they have high-quality education. To make sure that we get the necessary funds to make sure that our schools are improved and they have high-quality education for each and every one of our students. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We are now on to approval, oh, oh, I say that, is there anybody else that, that wants to speak, address the board from? I don't see anybody else. Is there anyone else? Okay. We are now on the, for approval of minutes, the Duval County School Board approved the minutes for the meetings listed in the agenda item. March twenty-sixth, twenty-nineteen, joint meeting, school board, city council. April eight, twenty-nineteen, regular board meeting. April nine, twenty-nineteen, board workshop. April ten, twenty-nineteen, special board meeting, student expulsion hearings. April sixteen, twenty-nineteen, board workshop and committee meeting. April twenty-three, twenty-nineteen, board workshop. April twenty-four, twenty-nineteen, board member meeting, Smith, Juarez, and Joyce. April twenty-four, twenty-nineteen, board member meeting, Smith, Juarez, and Jones. Is there a motion?
Move approval.
It was moved by Vice Chair Jones and seconded by Board Member Willie. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I call for your vote. By your actions, you have appr- passed this seven-zero. We're on to approval of consent agenda. Are there any items to place on the consent agenda or items for discussion? So, is there any, so, a call for your, call, is there a? A motion? Thank you. It's been by Board Member Smith Juarez and seconded by Vice Chair Jones. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I call for your vote. By your actions, you have passed this seven-zero. Discussion agenda. Board members, resolution regarding levy of a discretionary one-half cent school capital outlay surtax. Dr. Green, would you like to read your recommendation?
Thank you, Madam Chair. That the Duval County School Board approve the attached resolution regarding a discretionary half-cent school capital outlay surtax.
Board Member Joyce, you have pulled this for discussion. You may start.
Thank you very much. Chair Hershey, and thank you, Dr. Green.
Excuse me, excuse me, I think we need a motion.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
To get it on the floor.
Is anybody else along besides me?
No.
I'll move approval.
It was moved by, it was moved by Board Member Smith Juarez and seconded by Vice Chair Jones. Okay, now can we go?
We're good.
Right now, Board Member Joyce.
Thank you so much. I pulled this for discussion because I want to explain my reasons for opposing the resolution. As a parent of five children who have attended Duval County Public Schools, and a teacher who has taught in many classrooms around the district. I understand the need to address our aging facilities. Believe me, I want Jacksonville's public schools to be the envy of the state, and excellent facilities are part of that vision. Duval County is lucky to have Dr. Green because I believe she shares that vision. But I don't want to be in such a hurry to address this need that I rush past the concerns shared by my community. I represent District Six, which includes Riverside, Avondale, Ortiga, Argyle, the West Side, and Baldwin. And before I can even consider approving a requ- request to increase taxes. I have to approve a master plan, a master facilities plan, that addresses the facility needs of those communities. Beyond that, and based on the thousands of conversations I had with voters as I campaigned last year. There are real concerns in the community about the effect of the shortfalls we have experienced in recent years. Including cuts that were made to essential personnel and programs, like our magnet programs and our arts education. Before we ask, sorry, running past, uh, running past these known concerns toward a costly special election is, I think, a mistake. So, before we ask the citizens of Duval County to pay more in taxes, I recommend that we continue to engage our community stakeholders. And to approve a master facilities plan. At the same time, and to convince the voters that we hear them concerning the management of the one-point-seven billion dollars they've already given us. I have recommended the creation of an audit advisory committee unrelated to any referendum funds. This committee I have proposed, I, the committee I have proposed creating would be made up of volunteers from Jacksonville. Who have professional degrees in accounting and finance, and who would enhance our reputation by giving Duval County. One of the most credible, accountable, and transparent school boards in the state. With these issues addressed in some fashion, I would be happy to consider and take my constituents a plan to improve our facilities. But until then, I am afraid we put the cart before the horse, and I am compelled to vote no. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other further discussion? Any other comments? Board Member Anderson?
Sure, I appreciate Board Member Joyce's perspective. Um, I think that what we're talking about are two separate issues. Um, I think when we look at the master facilities plan, that's a conversation that we're continuing to have. We are going out to our communities, we are visiting with our stakeholders. That, that is a process that will continue to go on. Um, and we will work closely with them to make sure that people's needs are met. The resolution today is about allowing voters to consider an additional sales tax. That will go toward our facilities' needs. And that's not only to fund the master plan. It's also to fund the backlog of repairs that we have had, building and growing that's estimated if we don't do anything about. We'll face a billion dollars in deferred maintenance over the next five years. So, we can't, we can't do anything to take care of the schools we have, let alone create anything new or renovate. Without, without another revenue stream. This is, this is math, right? It's, it's pretty simple math. We have, um, only two ways that we receive funding from the state for capital outlay. We have one-point-five mils, which comes from people's property taxes, and we have PICO dollars. Duval County will not get any PICO dollars next year. Our charter schools will get a hundred-and-fifty-eight million PICO dollars across the state. I don't know what we are supposed to do. Our, our mills generate about eighty to ninety million dollars-ish historically. The PICO dollars in oh-seven, oh-eight, DCPS got eighteen and a half million dollars. This last school year, we got two-point-six million dollars. The state continues to roll back the revenue that we are allowed to collect to, to address our facilities' needs. And people will say, well, what, what has been going on? We didn't just have aging schools overnight. That's true, but I think at some point, there was a belief. That we might be able to get money, that those monies that were taken away during the recession would be restored, and that's just not coming. And so, I think we're at a place now where we have to take our own destiny into, into our hands. And I think it would be irresponsible to not at least offer this to our, to our tax-paying voters.
And I'll just add that I'm not, I am not opposed to offering it. I am, I just want to approve the, the plan before I ask for a resolution. That's my position.
Vice Chair Jones?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, um, support the resolution. Uh, I think we all re- recognize that there is a great need to maintain and build new facilities. There's no doubt about that. I mean, that's been well documented. I think that's a, a given. The question is, how do we pay for it? And we recognize as a school board that the state has not been willing to support us financially. How do you pay for it? And when you look around Duval County, we ain't got, you know, you don't have to look statewide, just around Duval County, Nassau, Clay, St. John's, all have impact fees. We don't have that revenue stream. St. John's and Clay have a half-penny sales tax. We have none of that. How do we compete and how do we maintain, not compete, but just maintain what we have? When I first got on the board in twenty-sixteen, the first thing that the former superintendent said, we need two new schools. A K-8 in Ocean Way, a K-8 in, uh, in the Townsend area. There was no funding for either. So, here we are, two years later, and, uh, three years later, and we still have not made any effort to address that need. That need is there, that need is growing, and if we, as a community, want to be quote, "the bold new city of the south." We have to educate our students. And it's not about what we want, it's what the, what the students need and deserve. They need a twenty-first century, as the superintendent points out, a twenty-first century facility learning. The teachers deserve that, and we have a lot of challenges in this community. And those of us who represent some of the neglected areas, we have the biggest challenge. Uh, the problem was not only created by the school district, the city council, the government played a part. In those neglected, under, under, underfunded, u- underutilized neighborhoods. They took away the commu- the neighborhood parks, then they took, then they cut the library hours. And now, we're taking away some schoo- some schools from those neighborhoods. Those neighborhoods, we need to win. They need to know that we care about them, that we're willing to make the commitment, eh, eh, to make them, put them first for a change. I think this plan and some, some variation of this plan does that. And I commend the superintendent for making that bold step that we should have made twenty, thirty years ago where we wouldn't be in this situation. What other counties have done with impact fees to build new schools or expand existing schools, we should have done twenty years ago. But we didn't have the courage to do so. We being the city of Ca- Jacksonville, the school board cannot impose impact fees, as you well know. And, and perhaps we should have done a half-penny sales tax years ago, but none of that's happened. When do we stand up and say enough is enough? We need to put our children first, our employees first, and let's do what's best for the taxpayers. Best for the children of this community by having the taxpayers, uh, have an opportunity to approve a referendum that would provide that funding. I think now is the time to do that. I think the city council recognizes that there is a need irrespective of what the office general council says. I think they recognize the need. I've spoken to a number of them who say that this is the right thing to do, we need to do it. Some are current city council members, some are former council members. They know the need, they recognize it, they've been educated, and we still have work to do. We still have employees that we need to make sure that they're compensated properly. But nonetheless, now is the time to address the facilities problem.
Board Member Willie?
Yeah, thank you for, for all the comments. Uh, Board Member Joyce, I appreciate you standing up for your community. It's one thing that I really appreciate about you as a board member. Um, and I think, I, I just want to talk through District Four. Um, I think when I think about District Four and Five, I think we have the most to gain from this and the most to lose as well. Um, we were at the, the meeting on yesterday, and the question came up, what if we don't get this money? What if we don't get this plan done? And I think the reality of that question came about, and that reality was, well, some schools will have to close down. Uh, we'll have to make tough choices. And I think this decision right now is a tough choice, but I'm in favor of this because of that. I think we have a lot to gain from this, so much to gain, um, from this, and we have to enter into this conversation in a position of strength. Um, I think this, the marketplace that is education is so vast and varied right now. And if we don't do something with our schools right now, um, we will start to be on a different plane. And I think we have to do what we can, especially when I think about the neighborhoods that I drive around in, in District Four and in District Five. It is amazing to me to think about the possibilities of driving down Moncrief or turning on Wynton and seeing a brand-new facility. Something that that district hasn't seen in decades, something that we owe and that, that community deserves. So, I'm excited to stand up and stand with the superintendent on this, and I'm sure there, there are things in this plan that we have to work through. Uh, we have a city council that we have to take this through, it has to go through committee, it has to be workshopped. And I'm excited to workshop it because that's an opportunity for us to go back and forth and bring people along. Um, and I think we need to take some of the politics out of it because it's become very political, and at the end of the day, it's about our kids. And I have young kids, and I think about them ten years from now going to a school. And if that school is the same age that it is now and does not have anything different in it, then people are gonna start making choices. To not send their kids to our traditional Publix and send them elsewhere. So, I think we need to stand, and I'm excited about voting for this, and excited to see where the conversation goes. I still think this is just the beginning, and there's a lot of works and tweaks. Uh, at the meeting last night, what I appreciated about it, folks gave real-life examples and things that could be a reality. And we have not seen a plan, we haven't tweaked the plan, so that's what, what I would also say to, to Board Member Joyce is I think still we have an opportunity to shape what we want this plan to be. But I think our window and our chance and our shot at this, I believe, is now.
And I would just like to add one.
What were you saying? Board Member Grant?
No, 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 I, I was just saying, we're doing this.
Oh, okay, oh, okay. You didn't want to say anything? Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, so just, um, just, you, some, for some more perspective. I completely agree with you and with you, Mr. Jones. I just, I know that we need the facilities, I know we need to, to, to address that. But I'll give you the exa- an example. My district, um, from Chafee Road all the way out west, Baldwin Middle Senior is the only school there. And in this plan, and we can talk about it, but this is where I'm very uncomfortable. In this plan, it addresses three hundred more seats at that school. I just met with some developers last week, and two major developers within the next five years are gonna add sixteen thousand new homes out there. And so, these are the kind of things that I just want some clarification on before I go and ask for a resolution. That's my position.
Thank you. Uh, Board Member Smith Juarez?
Thank you. Um, I too am very excited, uh, to support this resolution and, and support our superintendent. Um, in bringing this forward this evening. I, it, it was within the first couple of months of my becoming a board member in twenty-twelve. That we began having a conversation about facilities, and I say "we began" because I was sitting on the board. This conversation has been going on long prior to my service here. Um, and, and various solutions have been proposed over the years. Various tweaks have been made, bonds have been sought, um, you know, we have advocated for additional revenue streams. We have advocated to add back the half mil that was reduced during the recession. Uh, Board Member Anderson is exactly correct that we, I have watched in the years that I have been on this board, our capital funds dwindle. And it's not just because PICO comes from landline telephones. It is because there has been a reduction in the dollars that are sent to this district. It is because there have been rollback rates as property values have increased. And so, growth is not paying for itself when we talk about our schools. When we talk about those sixteen thousand new homes that are moving in. Where are those children going to sit if we do not have a revenue stream to build additional seats? Because right now, our, our revenue stream covers about a third of what we truly need just in major minor maintenance. Just to keep our building stock that we have now. It does not account for growth. It does not account for new facilities, it does not account for technology needs and, and, um, increased safety needs. And, and the other things that we must be able to address as a district. I think that the time is now, and I think that the time is now because boards before us, and, and as I have sat in this seat. We have done the due diligence to know what the opportunities are, what conversations we can have. And how we can best serve students, our teachers, our communities, so that we have vibrant neighborhoods with schools that are markers. Of the excellence that exists within that neighborhood. So that we have schools that are, the, that the front door is the place that people are seeking to walk through. Because they are schools that- they are schools that are well-maintained, that are renovated when needed, that have the space that children need to learn, and quite frankly, that are updated for 21st-century learning. That we know that learning today does not look like learning looked in 1929 when some of our schools were built. And so to be able to transform that now with a new revenue stream is a massive opportunity for this district, for all of the improvements that we have made in accelerated learning, in workforce development, in building business partnerships that truly link us to the jobs of the future. Now we need the facilities of the future as well. And so I would encourage us to move forward boldly, to move forward in confidence, to know that we are doing what is best for the students who sit in those seats today and doing what is best for the students who will sit in those seats in 10 and 15 years. The last time that we had a ribbon cutting in this district was over a decade ago, for a new school in Ms. Hershey's district. The last time that we had any type of ribbon cutting in this district was five years ago. We have to be able to keep the pace of learning for our students, and that includes facilities. So I am excited about this. It is one step in the process. So in order to move forward with timing, we need to pass this resolution this evening. It is not the end-all-be-all, it does not pass the referendum. That's up to the voters. So there's a lot of planning and education and communication that has to happen between now and realizing the vision that our superintendent and all of us have worked together to co-create for this district. And so I want to applaud her leadership, I want to applaud the leadership of all of the members of this board, supporting the resolution or not, because we've all contributed to this process. But I would really encourage us to move forward with one voice and with the understanding that we're going to do the best that we can to get this as right as we possibly can, to do all of the listening, all of the planning, all of the learning. We also, hopefully, with the voters' approval, will have a 10-year plan that will have to adapt and change for what will happen over that decade. And so the best that we can do now is to put this before the council so that we can continue the conversation, leverage the revenue stream that we have available to us, and continue to plan for the future. So I am enthusiastically supporting this referendum this evening, and I look forward to continuing the conversation with the community so that we can realize the vision that has been set forward and will be set forward.
Board member Anderson.
I just wanted to point out that even though we're talking about master plans, we're talking about Districts Four and Five, and we know that the master plan that we've already seen, although we haven't seen any final recommendations from the superintendent, does show a lot of money going to those districts, but every single school will be touched in that master plan. I happen to have one of the healthier districts, I'm very proud of my schools, they work really, really hard, and all those mommies and daddies out there work really hard to bring partnerships and resources to our schools. With that being said, part of this sales tax would be things like safety and security upgrades, and I know that that's something that's really important to every school and every community, and it's not necessarily about certain districts, right? This is something that we can bring to everyone. I know that in my district, there's $107 million just in my district alone in deferred maintenance that we can take off the books. And that's, I mean, that's something that I would be happy to be able to bring to District Two, and so I hope that we can move forward with this unified.
Thank you. Board member Grimes.
I too am very excited about this. This is a bold move. I'm very proud of my colleagues who are willing to step up to the plate. This has never been done before, and I think that our children deserve it. And so I think that we should move as quickly as we can, but also, in the same vein, work with our community on, this is a community effort, and so I think it's just very important that everyone understand exactly what we need, and it is, you know, this is just one step, and that's been said. I also believe that we need to really look at the mil for the teachers and the rest of our, yes, yes. Because I think our district and our people who do what they do every single day really deserve the opportunity to have, have a, have a salary that is really something that they should be proud of. And, you know, we do the best we can with helping our, doing our work, with trying to have a living wage and making sure that our kids are, our kids, our people are.
They're your kids.
Yes, they're your kids. Right, right. So I am very enthusiastic about this, and I think this is going to be something that we will be very, very proud of.
Board member Willie.
I just want to just acknowledge too, and let board member Joyce, I hear you, I really do. And I, just as if, I know we went out to Baldwin and we visited, and it was a great visit because I just wanted to see what that school makeup was, and I trust in your leadership. I do. And I want that to be publicly known, that as this process moves throughout, I hear you, and I want to see exactly what you're saying happen, because I trust in your leadership, I trust that you're making great decisions for your constituents. So know that throughout this process, both with that and with the audit committee that you also brought forward. So just, I just want you to know that I hear you, and I'm going to make the actionable steps to ensure that that hearing becomes in action too as we work through this.
Thank you.
I think this is a great moment, and I am so proud of this board for daring to lead. I would also like to thank, I see a city council member out there, I know they're just brave of you to come tonight to this meeting. The great thing is, like Vice Chair Jones, I've heard from multiple city council people today who were very encouraging and different than some of the comments or thoughts that you may have gotten out of the newspaper. So I'm encouraged, and as someone who has very deep roots in northeast Florida, and like many on this board who have nieces and nephews, and, you know, even have a great niece now, I just think this is a historic moment, and I'm just so excited to think that as I have young adult children who live here, and again, like I said, nieces and nephews, that in the future, to say we were a part of that is very exciting. But more importantly, I think this is, it's never too late to do the right thing, and this is the opportunity for the first time since consolidation for our city to weigh in and say if we will support public education like other communities have around our state and like our neighboring communities have. I think that's the biggest question that gets to be answered in this whole process is, will we support public education and what will we do for children? Sometimes there are things that we want, my experience in my life is, is that I don't always get what I want. And tonight, this vote is not about what I want, it's about making the right thing for the future of public education in Duval County, and more importantly, the right things for students. And I would follow up with what board member Anderson said, our districts are similar. And I know that my district and the schools in my district do not look like the schools in Vice Chair Jones or board member Willie's district, but I can tell you, my district is excited about the potential to have an additional wing, about the potential to have a school rebuilt which will make that school much safer, about the potential to have the much-needed renovations, new carpet, an AC replaced instead of repaired. My district is excited, and I am very excited about this opportunity for us to send a message to our community that we are going to allow them to weigh in on what the future of public education will look like in Duval County.
I just wanted to say one more thing. I do really appreciate the superintendent bringing this to us, and I have to admit that when you were interviewed, we're going, oh, yes, yes, she can do this for us. She was so successful. But it really, it takes a very bold leader to lead others, and I just want you to know that I really, really appreciate this.
Vice Chair Jones.
I must echo what school board member Grimes has said. When we interviewed Dr. Green, that was one thing that really stuck out, that she looked out for the employees and the facilities, and that's important, we really need that. And to those who are hesitant, we appreciate that. And I have to reflect on something, you know, very seldom in a body like this do you vote for an item that would benefit just your district. Most times, the votes we take affect entire county. And so I appreciate your position, I understand it. When we voted for, the difficult vote to bring the Jaguars to town, there were five people who voted against that, and they now tell me, well, we made a mistake. And the reality is, when you make difficult votes.
People who voted, no made a mistake.
They made a mistake, those who.
I didn't believe the headline to say Vice Chair Jones says the Jaguars will make a mistake.
No, 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 they made a mistake. But oftentimes, you know, you don't know whether you made the right decision until some time has passed. And I think and pray that as time passes, this decision we make tonight will stand out as one of the more relevant and revolutionizing public education decisions we've made in this county in a long time.
Board member Smith-Worres.
Thank you. I keep grabbing board member Anderson's pencil tonight, and without making notes, I forgot a couple of points earlier, if you can believe it. I do want to emphasize as well that this board has had quite a few conversations about equity as we've talked about it, and I think we have to think of equity not only as it applies to discipline and academics, but also as it applies to our facilities. And so I think that it is proper that we are looking at need, and we are looking at history, and we are looking at the opportunity of various programs, various schools, various areas, as we think about this plan. And I am very hopeful that when the voters are able to cast a ballot in favor of public education and in favor of improving our schools, that our attention to equity will be noted and will matter, that districts that have newer schools will get what they need, and districts that have older and sometimes, let's be honest, more neglected schools will get what they need. And I am very hopeful that Jacksonville will come together and will support that. I also want to emphasize as we think about the timeline that has been brought up. This has been a long time coming, as Ms. Grimes knows, really, actually, more than me, but at least this time around, as much as me.
Twenty years, thirty years.
And we know that if we wait, just in everyday numbers, we are looking at six-plus million dollars that we will spend to maintain items that we have no intention of keeping until their natural life because of the plans for replacement, because of the plans for rebuilding. And so I would prefer that we move forward and that we are able to invest that money in long-term infrastructure, not in short-term fixes for items that we know are not going to last. I also will say to that, that in just the last year, as I have been sitting on this board, we have had, when no students were in the building, a fire at an elementary school that potentially could have been prevented with properly maintained equipment, no, let me take that back, not properly maintained, Mr. Nelson, but with, our equipment is properly maintained, but with new equipment in that building. We have had a pipe burst in a wall in a media center because we were trying to patch and repair pipes that were beyond their natural life rather than replace them, and we didn't only have to replace the pipe at that point, we had to replace drywall, we had to replace carpet, we had to replace books. We have had several other, I won't list them all because we've been here a while, but we have had several other instances of AC units going down where we have to bring in trucks for days, where we're paying for those additional supplements. We have had roofs that are patched instead of replaced and therefore caused not just the issue in the roof, but issue in electrical and other equipment. So we've cobbled things together the best that we can, and Mr. Nelson and his team doing an incredible job, Mr. Solvall, of making sure that our facilities are safe for children every day. But we want to do more than that, and so the time is now, our children cannot wait. We will have the proper plans in place, we will know the most efficient and best ways to deploy the capital, and I appreciate the civic council and others bringing forward important questions that will be answered before this money is deployed. But I am proud to support the resolution.
Board member Anderson, do you want to say something else?
I didn't.
Oh, you kind of.
Necessarily.
Okay, I thought you.
You just brought up, just a quick reminder, though, the oversight committee that comes along with this referendum, I think, is another important point. So, you know, as we're looking at how to deploy the money and when to deploy the money and whether that's equitable, there's going to be a citizens committee that's going to help oversee that. So it's not necessarily just about, you know, us getting our hands on extra money. There will be a checks and balances and accountability system in place to ensure the best use of that, those dollars, the taxpayer money.
Without further discussion, I call for your vote.
We have more, y'all can leave, we have more. We're going to be here a little bit longer.
Councilman Joyce.
Joyce Morgan, I know.
Joyce, thank you so much for being here, and I hope that you will be one of our real great.
You're going to put her on the spot. Okay, we are on to academic services, public hearing and vote, Duval District English Language Learner's ELL Plan. Dr. Green, would you like to read your recommendation?
Yes. That the school board confirmed submission to the Florida Department of Education the District English Language Learner ELL Plan for the 2019 through 2022 school years, that the school board authorized the implementation of the plan prior to the Department of Education approval, and if necessary, continue implementation until the Department of Education approves the 2019 to 2022 ELL Plan.
I opened the public hearing, is there anyone who wishes to speak on this? I open the public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on this? Seeing none, I close the public hearing.
Second.
It was moved by Vice Chair Jones and I believe seconded by Board Member Anderson. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I call for your vote. By your actions, you have passed this seven zero. The public hearing and vote revisions to Chapter Six Board Policies that the Duval County School Board can deduct a public hearing and adopt the recommendation revisions to the following policies in the School Board Manual, Chapter Six. Policy six point three three, assisting teacher to become qualified. I open the public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on this? Seeing none, I close the public hearing. Is there a motion?
That moved.
Second. It was moved by Board Member Grimes and seconded by Vice, I mean, by Board Member Smith-Warras. Any discussion? Seeing none, I call for your vote. Public hearing and vote revisions to Chapter Seven Board Policies. Oh, I'm sorry. By your actions, you have passed this seven zero. I'm not trying to move along. Public hearing and vote revisions to Chapter Seven Board Policies. Dr. Green, would you like to read that?
That the Duval County School Board conduct a public hearing and adopt the recommended revisions to the following policies in the School Board Manual, Chapter Seven. Policy one, excuse me, policy seven point one zero, school budget system. Policy seven point two nine, debt management. Policy seven point three three, advancements to school internal funds. Policy seven point three four, petty cash funds.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, there's more, I'm sorry.
Well, it's my fault then. Policy seven point three five, Promotion and Public Relations Fund. Policy seven point three seven, investment management. Policy seven point three nine, bonded, bonded personnel. Policy seven point four four, depositories, depositing, withdrawing and transferring of funds. Policy seven point five zero, payroll procedures. Policy seven point five four, travel expense reimbursement. Policy seven point six zero, audits. Policy seven point six four, internal controls. Policy seven point six seven, anti-fraud. Policy seven point seven four, purchases for students. And policy seven point eight three, sale, transfer, or disposal of property.
Okay, so now I'm going to open the public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on this item? Seeing none, I close the public hearing. Is there a motion?
Some movement.
It was sec- it was moved by Board Member Anderson and seconded by Board Member Grimes. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I call for your vote. By your actions, you have passed this seven zero. Board member travel, that the Duval County School Board approve the following board member travel. May nine, nine through ten, twenty nineteen, New York, New York, the Life Saving Service Award from the Corey Stringer Institute, Smith-Warras. June eleven through fourteen, twenty nineteen, Tampa, Florida, Florida School Board Association Summer Conference, Anderson Hershey Joyce. Is there a motion?
That moved.
It was moved by Board Member Grimes and seconded by Vice Chair Jones. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I call for your vote.
Sorry, guys.
That's okay. We've got time.
Madam Chair, Board Member Grimes is going to have to initiate a hand vote.
Okay. All in favor? Do we raise, you want us to raise our hands or?
Only Board Member Grimes.
Only Board Member Grimes. Are you going to put it up?
I'll read the motion. That the Duval County School Board approve the following board member travel. May nine through ten, twenty nineteen, New York City, New York, the Life Saving Service Award from the Corey Stringer Institute, Smith-Warras. June eleven through fourteen, twenty nineteen, Tampa, Florida, FSBA Summer Conference, Anderson Hershey Joyce.
Do we need to vote again or?
Just Board Number Two, Grimes.
She's got to vote again?
She didn't vote.
I did.
She raised her hand.
Did you, I didn't see her.
Yeah, she did.
Oh, okay.
Do we have the results? By your actions, you have passed this seven oh. Superintendent travel, the Duval County School Board approve the following superintendent travel. May twenty one through twenty two, twenty nineteen, Tampa, Florida, Florida Department of Education, State Board of Education meeting. Is there a motion?
Move, prove.
Second. It was moved by Vice Chair Jones and seconded by Board Member Smith-Warras. Any discussion? Seeing none, I call for your vote. By your actions, you have passed this seven zero. We are now on for the record. Board Member Smith-Warras, would you like to start?
I would like to start, but I took way longer than I intended during discussion. So I am going to thank Don Nelson and all of the staff who have done tremendous work going back to the FCI report and beyond to bring forward the need that we know that we have in this district and the case for the referendum that we passed. Very excited to continue that conversation with council. And with that, I will say a quick congratulations to all of our upcoming graduates. I'm sure I will gush over you next month. Thank you.
Board Member Anderson.
I do want to remind everyone it is Mental Health Awareness Month. Thirty-five percent of the students in Duval County, according to the Uthrust Behavior, Behavior Survey, experienced depression. We know that suicide is the second leading cause of death for young people. So it's just critical that we continue to bring awareness, to reduce stigma, to make sure that people know that they can get help. Every school in our district has access to mental health counselors. I was fortunate and grateful to participate in our Student Mental Health Conference last month. And when, and I have to say thank you to MyLak, the Mayor's Youth Advisory Leadership Counsel. I think that's all right. And Katrina Taylor's team and the Behavioral Health Team here in Duval County for putting that together. But our students still don't know that they have access to these resources. So it's vitally important that we continue to talk about it, that our, that our staff in our schools, that our students are sharing with one another, that our counselors are able to get the message out. I also want to thank all of our partners for being here tonight, but also for the, the hard work that they do serving these children and providing counseling services to our hundred and thirty thousand students. That is obviously a, a very big task, but we are grateful for their partnership. And, and the Full Service Schools Program that we have here in partnership with United Way is not happening in other places. And it's pretty incredible. So I am, I'm grateful for that. I do want to also say a quick congratulations to two teachers in my district who won the Gladys Pryor Awards. Ms. Glenn Denning from Seabreeze Elementary and Ms. Phillips over at Fletcher, Fletcher Middle School. Huge congratulations to them. And I also wanted to say thank you to Community First, Community First Credit Union of Florida for helping put on a key communicator workshop and providing everyone with these little key communicator pins. And bringing awareness and educating our staff on how to be social media savvy and being able to reach out in, in a time that we know that marketing and branding and social media is so huge. Us being able to get out all of the great things that we're doing, not just the pizza parties, but the real substantial learning and experiences that are happening in our classrooms, to telling our own story is, is really important. So I'm excited for that program and for all the teachers that were able to go through that. Thank you to Community First. And I want to say Happy Teacher Appreciation Week to all of the teachers. Teaching is what makes all other professions possible. And none of us would be here without some really wonderful, incredible teachers. So thank you to all of our teachers. I do think because we are passing this resolution tonight and I'm very excited for that, I have some comments that I, I want to be able to leave with our community as we go into this next phase of working with our city council and, and the city administration on, on what will happen next. So my words of wisdom was a, a quote from Horace Mann, who's the father of education. And, and he says, be ashamed to die before you have won some victory for humanity. And I, and I think that when I took the challenge to become a board member, I, I did that with the full intention of putting our children's mental health and social emotional needs first. For looking at what is good for child development, but also taking care of our teachers and staff and their social emotional needs as well. And so I think that when our schools are struggling and our neighborhoods are struggling, our businesses are struggling, our real estate and development struggles, it's all tied together. Superintendent said that continuing to compare us to St. John's County is like comparing cantaloupe, no, melon to a lemon, I think is, is what she said. And, and I, I think that that is something unfortunately that people continue to talk about. We shouldn't forget that these other counties all support their public education systems with additional revenue streams. This is the opportunity for Duval County, for the voters to go out and to invest in our children, to improve our neighborhoods, to improve our home values, to attract businesses to Duval County. This is an opportunity to take Duval to the next level for everyone, not just our schools, not just our students, but especially for our children and for our future. And I, and I think about a research study called Broken Windows and the Broken Windows Theory. And as we've continued to have these conversations about our facilities, it just keeps coming up over and over for me. And so for the people that aren't familiar, essentially it says that there are psychological impacts when the area, the neighborhood has visible signs of decay and disorder. And we know that even our mayor has embraced the central tenets of this idea with his Fight the Blight campaign. And so this is one of our, our ways that we can come back and we can say that our school facilities face the same issues. When our, when our facilities are in disrepair, when our ACs are breaking, when roofs are leaking, the lighting is poor, air quality is poor, all of that impacts our students, all of that impacts our teachers. And things can escalate. If you look at the microcosm of a school, we know that as a city, we face a crime and violence epidemic. That's, that's real. The statistics are there. And our children are victims of that crime. And so addressing our facilities issues is tied directly to taking care of our children's psychological needs, their social emotional needs, and being a part of the solution to the crime problem in our city. We can partner together. This is part of that. We want to see sustainable change for our city. We have to take care of our children. And this includes the environments that they're in for eight to 10 hours a day. We're committed to hearing from our stakeholders to find solutions and, and a plan that will work and that will be, we'll be proud to present before any vote ever takes place. One part of the plan has been unchanging, which is to address every school's safety and security needs. And we know that if children come to buildings that are safe, inviting, healthy, with modern technology, research will tell us that they will undoubtedly have a significant impact on their academic achievement. When children see that their community values them, they will value their community. I think that our teachers shouldn't be left out of this example. I hope that we are able to continue conversations about being able to take care of our teachers and our employees and, and what the, what we can do for them financially because their job is tough. One of the greatest strengths in our community is diversity, but it's also one of our biggest challenges. And I think that our district is a B plus. We are, we're doing phenomenal work. We rank in the top 10 nationally for educational progress specifically related to minority and underserved demographics. And our teachers are doing an incredible job in the face of some serious challenges. So addressing pay increases is certainly not off the table for me. But at minimum, they should go to schools and work in buildings that are safe, inviting and healthy with resources that can help support their students and build morale. Finally, it's really important as we continue in this process that we remember that children don't sit on either side of any political aisle. They don't vote. They don't have the means to raise a political voice when budgets are being negotiated on their behalf. It is up to us to care for them. It is our responsibility to set politics aside and prioritize the well-being of our children and their right to free public education with equal access and equal opportunity. As we learned of the role the city council will play in deciding whether and when we are allowed to bring this opportunity to the voters, the word politics was used many times. It is my sincere hope that the mayor and the city will work together with us in moving the children and education forward. That politics will not stand between the people and the ballot box. I would encourage anybody who is supportive of this tax re- resolution, the referendum, excuse me, who believes in our children, who's ready for this opportunity, to please contact your councilman. Please let them know that this is something that you think is important for our future. Thank you for that liberty. I just wanted to make sure I had the opportunity to, to share that for the record.
Board Member Joyce.
Yes, I would like to say I'm so grateful for all of our teachers out there and they're celebrating Teacher Appreciation Week this week on, through my news feed. All the PTAs and all the wonderful, fabulous things that are happening for our teachers, it's wonderful. But I kind of laugh because I also have a lot of teacher friends on Facebook and they're posting about countdown to the end and we're so burnt out and is this ever going to end? So I think there's a reason why Teacher Appreciation Week is in May. They need to be appreciated. So congratulations to all of you guys out there. I did get an opportunity to go to the Purple Ball at Venetia Elementary last month. And this is such a sweet little, um, event, and it's to honor the military child. And Venetia Elementary has, I think about thirty-five percent of their students are, um, military children from NAS. And so their parents came, they were dressed up in uniform, and their little girls and little boys were, um, dressed up. And it was just such a sweet event because I'm sure, my son's in the Air Force and he's marrying, um, his fiance is in the Air Force. I'm gonna be a, my grandchild will be a military child eventually, so, one day in the future. So that was a great event for me to go to. Um, thank you, Mr. Hawk, for inviting me to the SAC meeting last night at Lee. That was, um, very, um, educational, always learn a lot there. And then finally, um, we had an opportunity to have the Transformation Jacksonville Breakfast, uh, last month. And I had the opportunity to sit with, um, or the privilege to sit with Dr. Green and, uh, Councilman Gaffney and Ken Jefferson and Ms. Monique Tookes. And, um, it was just such a sweet time, and so, um, that was wonderful. And I think that's about all I have. Oh, I don't, Mal Washington had groundbreaking for their new teen center, um, out on the north side. And I was able to go to that event last month as well, and that was fabulous. And the things that they're doing for that community and the work that's going on there is phenomenal. And so I would, you know, encourage you that if you get a chance to go visit, go out there, 'cause it's some great work.
Board Member Willie.
Uh, just a couple of things. Number one, um, Happy Teacher Appreciation Week to all the teachers out there. Um, just a quick shout out to a couple of teachers in my life. My mom's a longtime teacher, shout out to you, Mom. And Ms. McDaniel and Ms. Ward, uh, were instrumental to me when I was a first-year teacher. And I think that, that gets overlooked sometimes too, the mentorship between, uh, new and veteran teachers. So shout out to all the teachers, uh, for doing, uh, the work that you do each and every day. Um, I wanna thank the community, the Rebaught community, and even some of the Raines community for coming out to the meeting on yesterday. And also the staff for putting together quite the, um, interactive and engaging forum, uh, for folks to really participate in. Got a lot of great feedback and text messages afterwards and good Facebook comments. Um, it's a process, and I think we realize that. And I think that, that was a showing that we heard the community, they said we wanted to do it in a way where we feel heard and we can have our opinions be expressed. And we did that as a district, so I appreciate Dr. Green and all the folks who had a hand in planning that. Um, and last thing that I wanna do is shout out, one of my principals, the Rebaught Middle School, Mr. Ronnie Williams. He is now a doctor, so I wanna shout out Dr. Ronnie Williams. Uh, we were talking about that, he was at the meeting last night. So I think that's always impressive as well, for our kids to see our leaders in our schools actually pursuing, uh, additional education because they can aspire towards that as well. So Dr. Ronnie Williams, congratulations, and, uh, we wish you the best as you now, you're now our doctor. Add that to your email, please, email address, Dr. Williams. That's all for me, thank you.
Board Member Willie, we should've started for you so the rest of us could've acknowledged our favorite, our, our, please thank you to teachers too. You showed us all up, thank you. Uh, Board Member Grimes?
Um, yes, I did have some favorite teachers too. Um, I have to say, um, a real shout out to all of our teachers. I could never do what they do. I think I'm the only one on the podium up here who is not a teacher, and there's a good reason for that. Um, but I really appreciate it. I know that my four daughters had, uh, amazing, um, amazing, um, opportunities through, um, the, all of the teachers that they had. And, um, so I can't say enough about the, and I, about being a teacher. And I, it really bothers me when people don't realize that that's, this is the, the, um, job that makes a difference. What, what was it that you, one of y'all said something about?
No other job is possible.
Yeah, but it's, it's truly, it's, it's unbelievable for me. Um, and I just want to thank my colleagues, um, for, um, going through this process, um, even though we're, we're at the starting, starting block right now. Um, but for me, um, I've been around a long time, um, and, um, I know that, um, it, it takes a lot of courage to do what we did. And, um, I think it's gonna be, um, something that will bring us and the community together. And, um, I appreciate the superintendent and all of my board members, um, for, um, having the courage to do what we did.
Vice Chair Jones.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, uh, too wanna give a shout out to all those wonderful teachers that make all the other professions possible. Thank you for that quote. Uh, and also wanna thank, uh, Reese Hardy from Paxton School for Advanced Studies for doing the invocation tonight. Uh, I like to use students to do those kinda things. And wanna remind those who are still watching, who have not switched to the basketball game yet, that, uh, Thursday night at six o'clock, we will have a community meeting, uh, at Raines High School and the superintendent will be there, and I hope, uh, we get the same type of response we got from Rebaught last night. I think it was very productive. And I thought for a minute that the superintendent and, uh, s- school board member Anderson had a key to the city from the mayor. But I, I found, found out, thank you for that explanation. I kept looking at that, I said, oh nigga, how you got a key for the city? I didn't, we didn't get one, but now we know.
Oh, Ms. Anderson, you ruined that, you and I.
Yeah, I, I was, I was jealous. I'm gonna call up Currie and say, what did you do? But, uh, and also wanna give a shout out to the bridge success, the mid-year promotion. I was not able to attend, but I heard it was a wonderful success. And, um, I had the pleasure to attend the, Board Member Charlotte Joyce and I had the pleasure of attending the Annual National Day of Prayer, where our Bishop, uh, gave, uh, Bishop Diana Green gave a wonderful prayer on behalf of the school board and, and staff. And, uh, she did an outstanding job, uh, and very impressed. And all the, all the, all the speakers who gave prayers on behalf of various entities did an outstanding job. And that was my first time attending one, and, and, uh, Mr. Corley, uh, who arranged it, good job, sir, excellent job. And finally, uh, wanna, uh, thank the Raines School Advisory Council for supporting the renaming of the swimming pool at Raines from Sean Delipus, a young man who lost his life very early, but who was an avid swimmer and who taught many students in this county how to swim. And he was a graduate of Raines High School, and they renamed the pool in his honor. So I just wanna thank them. And Tony Hill for, for arranging that rename, renaming, thank you.
I am very excited about, we're living history now. I'm very excited about this historic moment, not only for this board, but for our community. Um, I was very encouraged by the comments that we heard tonight from the public speakers and, and, um, noticed a different tone even from some previous meetings. And, um, so I do believe we are communicating and engaging the community because I, I, I heard a shift in the, in the conversation. And it's just so important that our decisions are about all children in the community. And while we do represent our individual community, um, every decision we make impacts every student in, in every community. Last night I had the opportunity to attend the middle school graduation and some of the schools and Board Member Smith-Warras's district in mind. Uh, but I love graduation season, it is a lot of fun, and I'm looking forward to, um, all the graduations that are coming up. And I say congratulations to the class of twenty nineteen. Having said that, is there a motion to adjourn?
We adjourn.
Everybody said it, Board Member Grimes, um, and seconded by Vice Chair Jones, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we are adjourned.